Hi Cory.
Well, I just noticed on the minutes, is the solicitor's actual name to be on there? Because it's not.
I know, I noticed that too.
Yeah, I noticed.
Okay, I see Laura on my end. Okay, it's easy enough to have them go in and make that, yeah. Okay, I've got 7:01, I see Laura on the Zoom and the rest of the board seated. Sina is ready. Manager, are you ready? Okay.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for Tuesday, February 7th, 2023. If we could all rise and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and now we'll go to our manager for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this evening for the February 7th regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the Zoom platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us this evening in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have just a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the Zoom platform are asked to remain muted to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If you are a member of the public and you are acknowledged by the chair, you may unmute your microphone for your question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Here.
Ms. Dinini?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and before we move on, Ms. Martin, I just want to ask if you could please give us a time check when needed. I know we have a very full agenda, so if you could just help keep us on track with our estimated discussion.
Of course. I will set a timer for the agenda items, and I'll give you a 10-minute time check and a five-minute time check.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, up next is citizens' input for items not on the agenda. Is there's any, I see one in the room. If you could come on up to the podium, please. Just give us your name, your township of residence.
Good evening, Mark Kunkel, Ferguson Township. Good evening, board members. Tonight, I wanted to address the board on a matter of significant ongoing interest to the property owners in Ferguson Township. I'm aware the board and staff have been provided with a recent Commonwealth Court decision that has classified the stormwater management fee as, in fact, a tax. On January 4th, 2023, the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court ruled in the case of Borough of Westchester versus the Pennsylvania State System of Higher Education and Westchester University of PA of the state system of higher education that the Borough of Westchester's stormwater charge, or fee, constitutes a local tax. The court held that the stormwater charge, or fee, constituted a tax because the charge provided benefits enjoyed by the general public rather than individualized services provided to particular customers. This decision, as I understand, is being appealed to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. There is no obligation for the Supreme Court to hear the appeal, and if the Supreme Court chooses not to hear the case, the Commonwealth Court decision will stand. For the board's consideration, has the supervisors considered delaying further collection of fees given the Commonwealth Court's decision? Should the PA Supreme Court decline to accept an appeal by Westchester Borough, will the township be prepared to reimburse property owners for any fees already collected? Will the Board of Supervisors suspend any further expenditure of funds entering into new contracts for projects or services, et cetera, from the stormwater fund until a final court determination is made on this case? Will the board be forcing property owners to litigate the stormwater fee being charged by the township in order to eliminate the fee? And will the board be willing to place this matter on a future agenda so that the public can participate in the discussion? Will Rogers famously said, "If you find yourself in a hole, stop digging." Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, any on Zoom?
Looks like Pam.
I'm sorry?
Looks like Pam Steckler.
Oh, okay. Pam, do you have your hand, okay, I can't see it on the screen, thank you. Go ahead and please give us your name and your township of residence, Pam, thank you.
I'm on my phone, so, well, I guess I have to lower it, too. Okay. I'm not too sure where this should go, if it should go in the public comment, or if I should wait until you discuss the saldo. I think you're, there's something about the saldo that you're going to be discussing later. Should I wait until then? It's about the TSD.
We're not talking about the TSD tonight, so you can give us your comment now, that's fine.
Oh, okay. Well, you're supposed to say, "I've been thinking a lot about this." Whoa. Am I on?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, something just happened to my picture. Okay. And I know that we had lowered the height to 45, and unless there was workforce housing included, then it would go up to 55. My question is with these, there's one building that's almost already up, and it has, uh, 68 beds in it, I believe, and the second one is probably going to be pretty close. So, we're talking about a huge number of cars that are going to be influxing into this little tiny space, and I was thinking if we could lower that height to 35 feet and try to encourage, um, some, you know, instead of these big giant square buildings, some apartments that would be more palatable to families and professionals. I have a lot of ideas in my mind's eye that could even be all residential without, without any businesses, and if it's 35 feet, the five feet could be, the first floor could start five feet up, little steps up, and there could be basement apartments, so there still could be four stories worth of living space there, and maybe have like a U-shaped, I mean, there's so many different options, a U-shaped thing where there would be parking in the back, and maybe a little playground area, greenery in the front, you know, maybe at the sidewalk have a little wrought iron rail and a gate, and then you walk back into the property, and have two doors there that would go to two apartments, that would be floor-throughs. I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff that you could do to make it really nice, and when I was looking at the stuff that was Brandy and, oh, what was her name, Angie? I don't remember. When we had those meetings, a lot of people mentioned trying to do something that would attract artsy stuff and, and cultural things in the area, which I think would be spectacular. I mean, it would, it would be really nice, plus to Ferguson Township, to have an area that would be like that.
Thank you, Pam. Thanks, I encourage you to bring that to the next public meeting on the TSD, which I think has been scheduled, and I'm looking at Jenna, so that'll be posted on the website. But thanks for all of your comments and input, appreciate that, and I'd also encourage you, if you have additional comments, to go ahead and email them in prior to that public meeting. That'd be appreciated.
So, when did you say that public meeting was going to be?
Right now, it's scheduled for March 15th.
Okay, and is that going to be, um, like the last ones were, or is that going to be Board of Supervisors' meeting?
This is going to be a special public input meeting, so everyone is invited. It will be similar to the first public input meeting that we had back in August.
Okay, and then are conclusions going to be drawn there? I mean, are we going to be presented with different ideas?
No conclusions right now. They are going to provide a summary of what they've heard thus far on the boundaries, the setbacks. I did make a point to have some time scheduled during that meeting to discuss the height. I think there was some confusion about whether the height issues that we have heard was in relation to the 75 feet of permitted height, or is it related to what's existing today, which is 45 feet, with 55 feet if you build workforce housing? So, we want to get a clear understanding of the height aspect during that meeting as well. So, there will be no conclusions provided during this meeting.
Are they going to, are they going to be coming with ideas, or, I mean?
And there will be more information. I don't want to go on about this too much longer because we have a very full agenda, but there will be more information. There'll probably be a description, I'm going to guess, on the website with the details for that meeting, so, and you can always follow up with email. I'm happy to, to get back to you on that, Pam.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, I'm seeing none, so we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the January 17th Board of Supervisors' meeting.
This is Patty, motion to approve the minutes from January 17th.
This is Cory, a second.
I just wanted to make, in the minutes, it listed, it didn't list Betsy Dupuy by her name, it listed her by, I think, her firm. I don't know, is that?
Saw that, yeah.
I don't know if her name needs to be in there, or if it's okay. I, she was calling her like Mrs. or Mrs. We can make that correction. Thank you.
Any other comments? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. Up next, Authorities' Boards and Commission reports, and we have the Park and Recreation Authority report from Mr. Keough.
Bill Keough, and I am the appointed Ferguson Township representative on the Park and Recreation Authority. You all should have received in your packet my written report. Can I see a head shake if that did occur? It did, okay. The magic of some of this electronics is still, you know, I sometimes question whether things actually get where they're supposed to go and/or I hit the right button to send them there. So, that's good. Just a couple of quick overview kinds of things on some of these topics. With our reorganization meeting, Kathy Madison, who has been our authority chair, and myself, who has served in the last year as the vice chair, were both reelected by the authority to serve in those positions for another year. I mentioned quickly the John Hess softball complex because it's something that is on our radar and has been talked about, but very honestly, we have not been taking any action related to that particular project, primarily because the things on our plate at the moment are taking up all of our time, both staff-wise as well as authority-wise. But the John Hess field will be an item that will appear at a later date as an action item on our agenda. Pool activity, everything is going as scheduled in terms of the winter maintenance that we do, and the public is now able to buy pool passes, and I believe that during this period of time, they can actually get a discount if they were to buy the pool passes during a discounted period early. So, that's going on. Millbrook Marsh is something that is on our radar, and, and the, all of the contracts to construct the addition to our education building plus the Welcome Center construction, all of those contracts have now been exercised, and the contractors will be bringing in their equipment and some materials that can be out in the weather in preparation for the, whenever it happens, the spring construction season based on, you know, wet grounds and all of those kinds of things. But everything is in place and moving forward on those two projects. I did, I have been asked, as have members of the authority, about the marsh during construction, and yes, the construction will have an impact on our ability to offer programming, but we are not closing the marsh's programming, and there will be activities that we will be able to conduct, but we won't be at 100% during the construction period just because of the whole safety and the location of where the different projects are going to take place on the property. But we are not closing the marsh property for construction, and I talked with the marsh director late last week, and a couple of their popular programs are already full with, with applicants, and they're, they're doing the same difficult job that all of us have in terms of finding leadership to run some of their programs, and that's always a challenge in the park and recreation world. I did take the opportunity in my report to talk about an opinion I have, and, and I feel it's important enough so that I wanted to at least inform the Ferguson board with regard to this whole financing of the boardwalk and the boardwalk repair and so on, because that is a big-ticket number in terms of what probably, and we don't know what the end result cost is going to be, we don't know how much work we're going to authorize yet, so all of those are, are up in the air. But the truth of the matter is, we all are pretty convinced that it's going to be a big number in terms of the cost. It's my personal opinion, not action by the authority, but my personal opinion, and I've shared this with the authority, that our municipal partners are not going to be in a position to somehow magically account for the funding of this project. It's going to require a much bigger look in terms of the funding. Certainly, our municipal partners will be part of that, but, but I personally just don't feel that we're going to be in a position to, to go to our municipal partners for the primary funding of this particular project. Having said that, and again, that's my opinion, having said that, in the comp plan that was done for Park and Recreation a couple of years ago, one of the recommendations in that comp plan was that we look at, as an authority, the formation of a foundation. To look into a foundation as a way of developing accruing of funds over a period of time to the point where then we can leverage other funds to do a project. And right now, that option isn't very clear, but the board, the, the authority has started the process of looking into the development of a foundation or a partnership with an existing foundation, i.e. the Center Foundation, which is a very active and very much a part of our community. With that in mind, the authority gave me permission to start to explore that process, and Kathy Madison, our chair, and myself met today with Molly Kunkel, who is the CEO of the Center Foundation, and just, just for an exploratory discussion about how the foundation that exists, i.e. the Center Foundation, could form a unique partnership with the authority for the purposes of meeting some of the 30-year goals that Park and Recreation sees that we're going to need, not just the boardwalk. It is my perception, with the unfinished work on the table for the regional parks we have, plus the boardwalk, plus some other things that might come up, over the next 20 to 25 years, we're probably talking about 30 or 40 million dollars worth of projects. And so, I feel that if, if we're going to do that, looking at the big picture of things, if we keep doing our funding process the way we have, we're going to get the same result, and it'll be this constant bang, 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 head-banging kinds of things that, that, that don't get us very far very fast. So, this is one way. Now, the foundation will not be a fundraiser. It's my vision that the foundation will be the deposit vessel for private dollars to be able to be held in a pot, to be used at a later date for match money, for grants, federal and state. It would also be a deposit for the possibility that other foundations might give us some grants, but we don't have something right on the table to spend it for, we have to accrue it. One of the nice things about all of that is, we already are a 501(c)(3), and that in and of itself is a plus when we're looking at eventual fundraising. It's also my personal opinion that probably we're going to have to hire a professional fundraiser if we're looking at 30 million dollars, 40 million dollars over the, over the next 20 years, because I just don't feel that, and this is my old supervisor hat showing, I just don't feel that the municipalities can necessarily carry that burden. I included some of those comments in my report. Please recognize that they are my opinion, they are not the authority's decision, they're already been made. Whitehall Road Regional Park is moving along. Whitehall Road Regional Park is moving along, it's wintertime, some of the equipment has been staged so that when the weather conditions are proper, they can do some work, yet this winter. And it just depends on how this freeze and thaw cycle goes, rain versus snow, and all of those kinds of things, but the project is moving along at a pace which is expected. We are also, and I mentioned in the report, starting the process of advertising or preparing to advertise for the replacement of a agency director. As you know, some months ago, our agency director resigned, and meanwhile, her assistant, Kathy Owens, who happens to be sitting here in a room with us, has been doing her job plus the job of the agency director, and we're starting the process now that will eventually end up in a search and a hire for that position. But nothing has moved forward much other than the start of that process. With that, I'll end my report and entertain any questions if you have them.
Thanks very much, Bill. So let's go to questions.
I do, sorry, um.
Go ahead.
Is there a project manager being hired for finishing up Whitehall and the Millbrook Marsh?
Yes, and it's in process. We had to rethink that whole project manager responsibility because so much of the Whitehall Road project has already been done. It was his estimation before he left that probably 75 to 80% of the work has been completed, and most of the rest of the work is surface work that has to be done to finish up. The management team that we have in place has been discussing with some of our municipal partners about how to move forward in terms of a project manager position and writing the job description, which we will then hire, because we still have 100% of the Millbrook Marsh Education Building and Welcome Center yet to build. But we do not have one, and we have not advertised for one yet. But it is on the table.
Thank you.
One other quick thing, because one of your members typically asks this, the current contingency balance in the Whitehall Road project is $230,517.14. That contingency balance money, that additional money that was approved by the COG, that is being tracked, tracked, tracked. We know where it is, when it is there, and how much we have, and for what projects. So, and that tracing of those dollars is very well accounted for.
So just a quick follow-up on Patty's question before I move on. So the payment for that project manager, I guess, will be split differently than it would have been for the previous project manager since most of the job will be done at Millbrook.
That's true.
So that'll come out of those funds, and that was largely fundraised.
Right.
Okay.
Yes. And that's part of trying to figure out what funds are going to be available and from which projects in order to fund that position.
Thank you. Okay, Jeremy or Corey, did you have any questions? Okay, if not, let's go to Laura, see your hand up.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Bill, for your report and your service. I have a couple of bullets here, questions, comments, several, Bill, I think you're going to like, because they're about data, and I know you and I share a fondness of utilizing data to drive decision-making. So I'm going to just start out with a bit of a, just some information for you. I had coffee with a soccer coach here recently, trying to explore the still diverse messages about needs for field and still, I'll call it, lack of data to support those requests in a way that is utilizable by the municipalities that are typically the responsible ones for investing in that, right, where the Authority has the data and we have the responsibility to invest in those assets and trying to get that data to us. So this individual was telling me that as he's trying to book fields for use, now if I understand correctly, you know, we play the telephone game, try to, as he's doing that, he's being told that there's priority use agreements that are not just for the regional parks. And that was the first time in my seven years that I had heard that. So I'm going to put a pin in it there, I don't want to answer right now, but I'll kind of sum it up to say, I spent a lot of time at Spring Creek Park, and I have, in the past two years, never once seen a sports team at any of those fields there. And that person told me they have a priority use agreement for a certain organization there that just chooses not to use it, but it's kind of like sort of pseudo-booked. Okay, anyway, put a pin in it, could be misinformation in terms of how I'm conveying it, but again, we don't get that data, and we are not responsible for that system, and it's opaque to us. So as our representative, could you follow up on helping us understand that, and that's a good segue into my next kind of question, help, support, could you help us kind of thing here? We haven't yet received, as far as I know, I looked in our agenda, I didn't see it, maybe I missed it, the last quarter 2022 report for Center Region Park and Rec participation in pavilion numbers, programs, what they have, et cetera. We haven't gotten that yet. If you could help us get that, I know, again, they're busy. Briefly, that'll segue into my comment on your foundation comment. My understanding is that we've been told in some meeting that staff time is not available for that endeavor, and if you look in that comp plan, the checkmark is in staff time, nothing but staff time. So I don't know that we are all rowing in the same direction, and if we are not, that could be inefficient. So we should check that out. Back to the data request. Further, looking at those previous reports, you can see that oddly, it looks like there are no sports teams that function anywhere outside of college township. Can we find out what the barrier is there to, I mean, maybe, actually, that's true, maybe there's something in the water there, I don't know, that only those folks do sports. But can we figure out, you know, are all those teams really registered in college township? Have we not been collecting that data? How can we look at that? And then, and then also, could we get the information, again, on the field rental, and are there actually some sort of de facto priority use agreements? When we looked at Ms. Kristi Owens, that's very helpful, and got some information on tracking pool passes, that previously I don't believe I had access to, and confirmed that the organization does not track daily entries, but, so if you look at tracking pool passes, Ferguson Township is not the highest user. And, you know, we are paying the highest in the Park Authority budget, we have less representation than the borough, but as we begin to track some of this data, it looks like we actually don't have the participation levels to support being the primary funder. And then, so the question is, as we move forward through Parks Governance, and Bill, I know you're interested in that, Patty, you're here, let's talk about the library as both a funding and a representation model, because they utilize participation data, they don't use it all, it's not perfect, they don't do virtual, only, right, it's very imperfect, yet they use it. And then they have two reps for Ferguson Township on that body to vote. So that's some really more appropriate representation, and so just kind of on a tangent there, can we maybe move that forward a little in your body, and looking at yourselves and how you're comprised and how you're funded, and then who you serve, and maybe what would be fair as we move forward? And then I just want to address, Bill, something that has come back to me, as I understood it, it was portrayed that someone in discussing the master plan for Fairbrook Park, someone indicated that they wanted the stormwater basin, I'm sorry, the sports fields removed from that facility. And I wanted to make some public clarification of that, because again, playing the telephone game, not always the best way to convey information, we all acknowledge. So I was at that meeting, and I participated in that conversation, and specifically what I was referring to, if that happens to be the person that was perhaps discussed as wanting to remove the fields, what I was referring to is actually page 130 of the Regional Comprehensive Study for Parks, the bullet toward the bottom that refers to what our future planning should look like across the region, and it says, "Consider the potential impacts of climate change on park sites, particularly parks with streams, drainage channels, and stormwater basins that contain playing fields. Limit development in floodplains and restore historic channel and floodplain topography. Plan for the potential impact of climate change in conjunction with the adopted Center Region Climate Action and Adaptation Plan." So what I was responding to is the assertion that what we should do in that master plan is to actually add a sports field for soccer, and that we should provide very expensive, fancy underlayment, storiment, water management kinds of facility to sheet off the water. And so I responded to that, that I think that might be in conflict with the direction that's been set in our regional comprehensive plan, and also prohibitively expensive for this township to consider investing in, and that we should, again, look for the data to show us where the need is to both address our climate goals and our recreational goals. So I know that the Park Authority is very specialized, and you only talk about recreation, but we continue to try to broaden that discussion out into other things, and that's been done in this comp plan. So I do appreciate the idea that the foundation came from the comp plan, but so does this. So I think it would be important to kind of set the record straight on where that came from and who was saying what about what. So if you could help on those matters, it would be really appreciated, and I really appreciate everybody's time, because I know we have a super hefty agenda. I really don't want any response right now, Chair. I'd actually prefer that this just be a continuing kind of a conversation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and thanks for all those comments, and like you said, there's several things in there, we can hopefully get some information back at our next report, and also follow through with in the Governance Committee. That's where my questions are, I guess not questions, you know, I don't know how much you can respond to right now, but my comments really are about the idea of the foundation. They're not in favor of or against the foundation, it's really about the process and the pace.
The what?
The pace. So how, you know, when this would happen, and then...
We're in infant stages of exploring options.
Right. But even at that point, that's kind of where my question is. So what is the Parks Capital Committee role in that? What is the Authority role in that? So those kinds of questions, I think, are important to talk about before even the exploration goes too far, because once that happens, I think there is ownership in those projects. And so I think it's important to establish, you know, what the vision, you know, what is going to happen. And so that's where I'm at, you know, and being a little bit concerned that those things aren't established as yet. I think the best avenue to do that is in the Governance Committee, and I think that work needs to be allowed to happen and continue, you know, I can't imagine that's going to be done in less than a year, you know, I just, I don't, maybe by the end of the year. But, you know, that's what I would think needs to happen first, is that those...
That has been in the infancy discussion stage, the governance aspect has all been part of this exploring process all along. I didn't report 100% of everything that's going on.
Sure, yeah.
Okay? Clearly, it has.
Yeah. But I think what I'm saying is, I think, then in tandem, if that's the, you know, if the Authority wants to explore it, I think that those discussions on governance maybe need to speed up and catch up a little bit.
And I have no control over that.
Understood. So along with that, I think that, you know, maybe, and this is part of the question, is what role does Parks Capital have in these decisions? So, you know, if Parks Capital stays, going to have a discussion about something, we would discuss it here at the Board, the rep on Parks Capital would have a very good understanding of the Board's position, and so I'm wondering if, at this time, we'll, you know, consider sometime soon, discussing those types of funding strategies so that the Board can deliberate, get an opinion, so that we can adequately communicate with you as the liaison, as a representative of the township to the Authority, so that you can convey the preferences and thoughts of the Board back to the Authority in a timely manner. So, you know, I really appreciate you updating us on what's happening at the Authority so that we're able to talk about it, too. And so I think, you know, as a follow-up conversation, probably, you know, and in discussions with the manager, and, you know, that might be something we need to look at sooner rather than later, so that you, as representative, understand the direction the Board's interested in and the opinion of the Board. So I think, you know, I agree with you, various funding strategies have to be explored. So I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying that we have found ourselves in a complicated situation and dealing with very major projects, and before any further thought was put into combining any work, any liability, any financing between the Authority and another organization, I would think that we would probably want to allow Governance to move forward a little bit, Parks Capital, so that's my...
And Madam Chair, it's my impression that that discussion has to be through the COG, not through us. If you want that kind of opportunity, then I feel you need to talk with the COG system.
Point of order, point of order. I think this is really just for feedback from you, Mr. Keough, and, you know, that's probably not an accurate interpretation of our structure, and it's not the best time for the dialogue. I think the Chair had some really valid points, and I think that we should hear them. Thank you. Point of order.
Thank you, and I think that's the discussion, right? That's the discussion. So, you know, I don't...
And Lisa, I really appreciate the fact that you have comments, but if the desire is to make your comments and leave me not respond or anything else, you know, that puts me in a really difficult position to communicate with you. I just listened to 10 minutes...
Point of order, Mr. Keough, this happens all the time in your meetings. So you have a three-minute timer, and the alarm goes off when somebody speaks. So I hear what you're saying, it's not ideal, but this is a point of order, you're not hearing the Chair, and it's making me uncomfortable.
If there's something that you really would like to respond to, you certainly are able to do that at this point. My comments, as I said, are for feedback and future discussion, and I understood Ms. Dinini's comments as the same. So, you know, if they're, but what I'm offering is the opportunity to respond if there was something that you deem... something that you deemed necessary to respond to at this point. But my comments to you are just that, that I think it's appropriate at this time to identify responsibilities and procedures and do so at this point and preferences of the board before too many more steps are taken. I don't even understand if it's the authorities, if it's within their purview to establish the foundation themselves. I don't know that. So this, this would be...
See, that's part of the problem.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I would just like to note that we have exceeded the 15-minute threshold and I do apologize, I set the, the timer and my, my phone notification was on silent. Um, and I also just want to note that I, I, um, am happy to follow up in, in whether it be by phone or by email with Mr. Kio. Any questions that he has in response to the, the comments made by the board members to Mr. Kio? I'm happy to work with him directly offline if that is an option so we can move forward with the agenda. Thank you.
Understood. So I think in summary, the report that, when you bring your report back to us is the opportunity that the board has to give you back feedback and ask questions for you to bring me back next time. So, you know, obviously in the meantime, we're able to communicate via email, but it's not in this public format. This is that opportunity. So we need to take advantage of that and, and explore several things when they're, uh, presented to us. So again, I thank you for your report. I really do. I appreciate you coming, appreciate your service in the authority and, and hope to continue the dialogue so that there is, uh, always open communication.
And I'm available all of the time. If you want to have a work session with me, if you want to have, you know, those kinds of environments to deal with the kinds of issues or, or challenges that you're presenting, a three-minute time limit is, is really not a forum that provides the opportunity to, to, you know, deal with some of that.
Well, that's fair.
And I don't want to say anything that I'm going to regret tomorrow morning.
No, that's fair.
But I'm not feeling really good about things going the way they are right now.
If there are items that require further discussion, you know, we can make possibly, you know, additional times for you to come back and report. I think that's a fair point, I do. Because some of these are really large items that take additional conversation and this is the public time that we are allowed to talk about. Yes, we can speak, you know, offline, but it's not, uh, this, it's not this, um, opportunity where we can all be together in a public format to discuss. So, thank you again.
And unfortunately, you can have that time, but I'm limited to three minutes. That's unfortunate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next is special reports and first we have DEI initiatives and acknowledgements. Um, this month is Black History Month and the administrative offices will be closed for Presidents' Day, February 20th. Uh, next is staff and committee reports and we'll start with COG committees. Uh, Parks and Rec Governance was canceled, I think that was weather-related. Um, following that is the Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee, which was my meeting. Uh, the agenda summarized everything very well. The only thing I wanted to point out, um, uh, well, I guess I would just encourage you to read the item on the census. There is a really good, uh, presentation included in that agenda, which really highlighted some of the complications with the last census that was taken, uh, and, um, steps that the planning agency will be taking to address some of the questions and concerns following, uh, following that. After that is facilities committee. Laura, thank you.
We, we met this morning. The primary, uh, item we talked about was the long-range facilities planning, um, and priorities and COG staff did a really nice presentation. They highlighted that typically it's, it's not really in the emergency or dire need situations that, that priorities are argued over, I guess, but typically in more of the optional realm. Um, so, you know, that's where we function a lot in that policy realm. So that's why it's so difficult for us. Um, so, uh, that was helpful. Um, also staff provided a response to the questions about the Musco lighting, um, that was very helpful. I am still reviewing it, um, but I do have some questions. So for example, in the facilities agenda, um, attachment 7D2 Muscopian contract documents, there was a, just a line, it just says price increase as of 7/26/21 for 19,000 plus dollars. And so like, you know, we never heard of that until 2020, what, October and November 2022. So I don't really ever see any record of that happening. So, you know, just so, some other questions, um, have kind of like surfaced. So I'm sure that if I respond, um, through, I think it's how, where's the chain of command? Like me to Lisa to Rich to staff perhaps, um, would be how I would ask those questions. Um, and then the other item, I guess in the, I guess I have a little bit of concern with some of their language that they did use in attachment 7D1, attachment matter of record D, 7D Musco Sports Lighting Contract. Um, you know, on page two, they just, I think it's really splitting hairs and it comes from not the best place. Um, it really seems very defensive and it, it makes me concerned moving forward. And I can provide some documentation in response to it. It says, "Research and review of documentation has indicated there is no language in any approved COG funding motion restricting project funds from being used for the field lighting." So, you know, how you can say a sentence and that can be true, but like one notch off and then it's, so in multiple places in the agenda, it says things like, "This will be a hundred percent grant funded. We have it in minutes." Uh, "There's only seven, $75,000 left until this project is fully funded." So I guess, you know, I, are we splitting hairs there and can we move forward in a different kind of a, a, more of a cooperative? Like, yes, it was actually said and it was a promise that was made. And so that's, you know, what we should maybe be moving forward with that kind of a relationship building perception. But again, generally just really glad that that documentation is being provided. It does look like it's about, uh, three-quarters of a million dollars for that, that lighting project. Um, and then the last thing I want to highlight, it won't be found in the agenda, but it's just a general comment. I'm going to continue to try to integrate things in a somewhat efficient way about COG. Um, so the facilities meeting and the, the facilities long-range plan, really if you look at that, I mean, the mass, the ma, the most, uh, uh, chunk of that meeting and everything we talked about in that, uh, committee is about parks. And it should be because like, remember how 75 per, no, mm, 96, I think, percent of the CIP investment, something really, really high, was parks? No, very hot. Um, so as we move forward and we're talking about parks governance and staff time and you look at the COG structure and you see the, the terrible emotional difficult rifts that occur from information failures and structural disarray, it, it's, it, it, we would really need to address this and rapidly, um, before we get more structure around it. And, and seeing the facilities meetings and how much is about parks and finance and how much is about parks and looking at, uh, the finance director's time and seeing how much is about parks and same with the executive director. Why are we not, why are we going through the exercise of the fin, of the COGS, Parks Governance Committee when clearly we are, we're already doing it in a duplicative manner and the answer is to only do it once? So, I don't know. Um, if we can move that along through executive, Lisa is where I'm eventually heading with that ramble. If we could please move through to executive in some manner, this idea that almost everything we talked about in a huge chunk of our meetings is parks. And then the park authority is having three meetings a month, two. Can we be more efficient? You know, this general question. Can we be more efficient and cooperative faster than more than a year in another governance committee cycle? I mean, talk about needing to re-educate people. We wanted that COG building thing done in a hot minute. Boy, this is way more education than that thing could ever be, right? So can we get it done this year? This year? So thanks for, thanks for entertaining my ramble, but I knew when I got on facilities, I've, I would see that such a huge part of it is about parks. Um, so more on that. Thanks. Any questions?
No? Okay. Up next is Spring Creek Watershed Commission.
I, I was not able to attend that meeting, but Kevin, Abby, who's our alternate, did and he wrote a report, which is in our minutes. Kevin, if you're there, if you just want to take a minute and give us a quick update.
Thank you. I am here and, uh, I submitted the report, uh, had a very positive educational presentation about the, uh, Master Watershed Stewart Program that is run by, uh, Penn State Extension, much along the lines of Master Gardener and Master Naturalist. And I think the Watershed Commission will want to work with Extension to, um, amplify and collaborate with that in the Spring Creek Watershed. Uh, on the business side, Harris Township asked for a slight pause in the review and potential adoption of the revised bylaws and, uh, I guess I should back up to say under the current bylaws, uh, we swore in Officers Dustin Best from College Township, Randy Brackbill from, uh, Belfort Borough as Chair and Vice Chair, and continued Jim Lanning as Secretary. To the point of consideration of revised bylaws, Harris asked the other member municipalities for a pause so that they could do a legal review to see if the, uh, bylaws, the revised bylaws were congruent with the original, uh, inter-municipal watershed, uh, agreement and that's being done. We had planned December, or excuse me, February 15th for an orientation and onboarding session with members, appointees of the commission and others. Chair Best suggested to Harris that they, uh, conclude their legal review and we would have a special meeting at the first portion of the February 15th meeting to review, uh, that legal opinion, consider maybe, maybe not, uh, the revised bylaws and then, uh, at the conclusion of the special meeting in a timely basis, move to the orientation and onboarding. So that's, uh, pretty much, pretty much what's been happening. Uh, I tried to include in there, uh, sorry Cory that you weren't able to, uh, make it. Uh, hopefully you can participate February 15th. But, uh, generally speaking, the third Wednesday of the odd months, every other month of the year is when the Watershed Commission meeting meets, uh, January, March, May, July, September, and November, on the third Wednesday so that it conflicts as minimally as possible with other, uh, regularly scheduled meetings in the watershed. Thank you. That's what I have.
Very good. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Cory. Okay. Any questions on that? I'm not seeing any, so we will move on to staff reports and up first is the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a copy of my detailed, uh, manager's report for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for the manager? I'm seeing none. Also included are the Public Works Director Report and Planning and Zoning Director Report.
I just wanted to go and touch on one thing. So from the Public Work Director's Report and, and Centris, you can help me with this too, because I saw in there that they were doing in-house, um, design work on Blue Course Drive between Martin and Circleville and that, like the Crossing Island, et cetera. And I thought we were going to try and work with CADA to talk about relocation of the bus stop. And it seems to me that that's, again, just, is that the best use of time or how can we speed up conversation with CADA to see if there's any chance of moving the bus stop?
Yeah, that's a great question and I, Dave Magrger, I'll probably... Okay, not seeing any other questions.
Madam Chair, I, I do actually want to report, so, uh, on an update here. In my manager's report, I provided a brief, um, update on the oil spill that happened in Western Ferguson Township and I would like to share that as part of coffee and conversation held at Bayleville Community Hall, that was a, a discussion topic that we spent, that staff spent quite a, quite a bit of time engaging with the residents that attended that coffee and conversation. I believe that was held Saturday, January 17th. Uh, I would like to share that you will not find in my report, uh, however, I'm happy to share that Assistant Township Manager James Progar has invested time to coordinate for a follow-up communication and engagement event with the residents, uh, particularly those that live in the western side of Ferguson Township, uh, just to, to better solicit feedback from the residents, understanding that the oil spill, while it did happen in a stream located in Ferguson Township, we do not have any jurisdiction on that stream. Uh, we don't currently have an MS4 project happening in that stream. It is 100% in this jurisdiction of DEP. And so, you know, we understand that we, while we don't have jurisdiction, that doesn't change the fact that we have a great deal of responsibility to our residents and oftentimes they do look to the township for some answers. In this particular case, we really, we gave answers as we had them and truth be told, we just don't have enough answers until that investigation that's being currently conducted by DEP is concluded. But understanding through expression of care that the residents certainly have a voice and they want to be heard, we're holding an event, I believe, I'm, I'll look to the Assistant Township Manager to correct me if I'm wrong, that is scheduled for 7:00 PM on February 17th.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, sixteenth. Thank you. Um, and we do have key stakeholder representatives attending, including, um, COG Emergency Management Coordinator Sean Kaufman and our, the Executive Director of the State College Borough Water Authority, Brian Heiser. And we're looking to see if other representatives of key agencies are available to attend, but at this time we have confirmation from those two. And of course, myself, the Assistant Township Manager, who oversees the communications and engagement for the township, uh, as well as the stormwater engineer, Erin Joel, and will also be in attendance. And so while again, we don't have jurisdiction, we certainly can't change necessarily, you know, a process to which we don't have jurisdiction on, but just better understanding what we might be able to do in terms of future education that might help residents better understand the first steps you take when you're in the midst of a crisis and the appropriate contacts to call. So we acknowledge that there may be a gap in understanding what to do and the, the level of desired communication versus what happened. And so we're looking to see what, if, you know, anything we can do after hearing from the residents at the event scheduled at 7:00 PM on February 16th at Bayleville Community Hall. Press release will be issued this week. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, thank you for highlighting that. I'll also note that in your report, um, is the DEP hotline phone number for, um, any inquiries, um, questions about the oil spill. Um, and I appreciate all the time you spent at Coffee and Conversation. It was, uh, probably the main topic that day. Obviously, uh, there were just a lot of unanswered questions and thanks so much for organizing this follow-up meeting.
James Progar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll be much appreciated. Okay, any other items on that? Any other questions for any of the other staff reports? Nope, seeing none. We'll move on to unfinished business. Up first is a public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania, to ensure anti-discrimination, presented by Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start with the previous meeting, a regular meeting held on December 13th, 2022. The Board authorized staff to advertise for a public hearing for the adoption of the anti-discrimination ordinance and the Regional Human Relations Commission. And over the past several years, Ferguson Township has been in collaboration with the regional partners, namely the State College Borough, as well as Patent Township, to establish a non-discrimination ordinance and the Regional Human Relations Ordinance. The ordinance, or excuse, yeah, this particular ordinance of focus here for this agenda item, the ordinance will prohibit discrimination in employment, housing, public accommodations, and residential real estate-related transactions because of race, color, religion, age, ancestry, national origin, place of birth, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, source of income, disability, or handicap, presence of a service animal or assistance animal, pregnancy, the birth of child, or a marital or familiar status. And provided with the agenda is a copy of the anti-discrimination ordinance that was presented to you in December for your consideration. And the recommended motion this evening is that the Board of Supervisors adopt the anti-discrimination ordinance.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so I'll first open the public hearing for comments from the public on this item. I'm seeing none. So I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the anti-discrimination ordinance.
This is Cory. I second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
I just, I heard a second from Mr. Gracie Griffin, and I heard a second from Ms. Dinenny. So if I could, if anyone else may have heard, just for confirmation of the notes, who got the second and first?
I heard Cory's second first.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And this is a roll call vote? If the public hearing has been closed?
It has been closed, and there was no further discussion. I didn't see any. I can't see the hands on the left side of the screen, so if there are any, you guys can just let me know. Or Laura, you can just speak up if you have anything, because I can't see over on that side of the screen. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. There is nothing, so this is a roll call vote?
Thank you. So this is a roll call vote for ordinance 1084. Mr., I'm so sorry, Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Dinenny?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
All right. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay. Up next is a public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, to establish the Regional Human Relations Commission. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Again, at a regular meeting held on December 13th, 2022, the Board had reviewed a draft of the ordinance to establish a Regional Human Relations Commission, and was, staff was authorized to advertise for this public hearing to be held this evening for adoption of the anti-, or excuse me, for adoption of the Regional Human Relations Commission. And I'll just note, over the past couple of years, Ferguson Township has collaborated with State College Borough and Patent Township to establish the non-discrimination ordinance now adopted, as well as the Regional Human Relations Commission, which is charged to investigate and adjudicate complaints under the anti-discrimination ordinance. The adoption of the Regional Human Relations Commission will allow for regional jurisdiction to adjudicate complaints and membership from the adopting municipalities. The task of the commission would be to investigate the complaints of discrimination, and then to facilitate mediation and consolation of any founded violations. Provided with the agenda is a copy of the Regional Human Relations Commission ordinance for your consideration. The recommended motion is provided with the agenda packet. I'll also just note and share with you all, a big shout out to our solicitor, Betsy Dupuy, for all of her time and invested patience and energy it took to get this to the finish line, to bring in front of you. Of course, the ordinance for the Regional Human Relations Commission took a lot, bless you, a lot of collaboration and communication with the participating municipalities to ensure, of course, that the legality, the legal part of the ordinance is agreed upon and vetted with all of the municipalities. So thank you to Betsy Dupuy. And with that, it is a public hearing and a roll call for the ordinance. Then you're ready.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, as the manager said, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing for any comments from the public on this item. I'm not seeing any. So I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the Regional Human Relations Ordinance.
Laura?
Thank you.
And Jeremy here will second that.
Great. Any discussion?
I just concur.
I'll just...
Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you. I'll just add that, just many thanks, yes, to the solicitor and to staff, in particular, Centris, for working through this regional aspect. So while the State College Borough was the first to have this commission, it was Ferguson Township's, really Sarah Spock Carlson years ago, that kind of got us moving on a path to broaden this to a regional mission. And so many thanks to her and all the supervisors that kept it alive with CPR over the years as it came back around and around. And I did wonder, in the end, I'm pretty sure it's true, right, that for the center region, College and Harris have still not, they're still not participating? Just checking on that.
At this time, I'm not sure of their participation, so I can't comment on that. But they, I do not have a date for their, I do not have a date or confirmation of their level of participation at this time. I can confirm that Patent Township is advancing forward, and State College Borough, just recently adopted.
Yep. Yep. And many thanks to the Borough for all their leadership on this. So, thank you, and that's all I wanted to say. No questions.
Thank you, Laura. Jeremy?
I just continue with the gratitude, thanking the manager, as well as our solicitor and our municipal partners that have worked together and made this happen.
Anything else?
I'll echo the thanks, and thank you. I know Laura has also put a lot of work and time into this over the years, so appreciation for that as well, and thank you for noting the other past supervisors who've worked on this. So, much appreciation. So I think that concludes discussion, so we will move to the roll call vote.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call for ordinance number 1085. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Dinenny?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It passes unanimously.
Thanks very much.
And if I could, of course, I too echo the thanks to Supervisor Dinenny, as I believe she may have led this charge as the supervisor, and I'm sure I'll get a text if I don't give a shout out to former manager David Pabulka for all of his hard work and effort and energy to take this on when seated as manager here at Ferguson Township. So, thank you, former manager Pabulka.
Thank you for that. Okay. Up next, a public hearing on an ordinance of the Township of Ferguson Center County, Pennsylvania, amending the code of ordinances as follows. One, accepting the deed of dedication of BTJM Orchard View LLC, Pennsylvania Limited Liability Company, for a public street in the Orchard View subdivision, to be known as Apple View Drive. Two, setting a maximum speed limit of 25 miles per hour for Apple View Drive between Whitehall Road and West College Avenue. And three, establishing stop intersections on Apple View Drive at both Whitehall Road and West College Avenue.
Thank you.
We'll go to the manager for this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Director of Public Works, David Magicker, is not with us this evening, and so I will read the narrative. The Apple View Drive in the Orchard View subdivision is now ready for acceptance by the township. The road was designed, built, and inspected to the township's standards, as confirmed by our township engineer. The deed of dedication and bond is acceptable and reviewed by the township engineer and township solicitor. Provided with the agenda is a copy of the amended ordinance to modify the appendix, Appendix H, Street and Sidewalks, Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles Part II Traffic Regulations, Section 201, Maximum Speed Limits, and Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles Part II Traffic Regulations. This evening, the Board is asked to adopt the ordinance, amending the code of ordinance as described.
Thank you. And this, too, is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing for any public comment on this item. And I am seeing none, so I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the motion as presented in Section 5 on Patriot, the agenda packet.
This is Patty. I'll second that.
Thanks very much. Any further discussion?
No, I just have a question. It's sort of a, do these people not receive mail because they don't have a street name? I mean...
Oh, this is actually a standard procedure, so in the developments that if it's built to standard, designed to standard, the township has, in the neighborhoods, we take over the street, and we maintain it, and...
Oh, I see.
Yeah. I wish I could answer...
So it's been Apple View, so people have been getting mail. We're just sort of making it...
We're just...
It's going public.
We're obtaining ownership, and then that really allows for our, the responsibility of the street to be maintained. We can set the speed limit. It allows for us to have, with that ownership, the authority and the responsible party for maintenance.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. And so this is a roll call vote?
This is a roll call vote. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a quick question.
Yes, please go ahead. Yes.
I'm so sorry. I just have a question about this. I couldn't tell, so this is going to be an opening onto Whitehall Road in addition to the exit from the Sheets. Yes? That's how I'm reading the map?
Yes.
It is not a combined? That's a question.
Because it's Apple View...
Correct. This one goes, yeah, through the neighborhood. It goes through the neighborhood. Yes, that's correct.
That's what I thought. And it's like, right, it's coming out closer to Coral Acres than the Sheets, so there's an additional opening there. It's not going to be as high flow as the Sheets. But I just wanted to make a comment, that that Sheet's opening onto Whitehall Road is a strange phenomenon, that people will not stop there at that stop sign. And what they do, on the most regular of bases, is pull out real, real fast, and then go real, real slow. Like, they're very distracted. And I don't understand it, but it's a real stop sign there, and now there's just another opening there, and it's already close to that red light. It just seems like, I don't know, I guess, could we, you know, we're getting this street, the street is here, the opening is there, it's going to be forever. Maybe we can try to establish some better behavior patterns there somehow? I don't know. Okay, that's it. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was not a prediction that we made in Planning Commission.
Right. It's the weirdest thing. I can bet money, I can bet my last pinky finger that the person is going to try to beat the other, the flow of traffic out, and then slow down and are confused that there's like either a red light or a green light, or maybe they're going to turn, or they're not really sure, like, whoops, wait, the time to pause and think was back at the stop sign. But anyway, yeah, thanks for entertaining my comment on that strange phenomenon happening there.
Thank you. Okay. So this is, if there's no other discussion, we'll move to a roll call vote.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a roll call vote for ordinance 1086. Mr. Gracie Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Dinenny?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The roll call vote passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay. Up next, it is a discussion on the Solar Purchasing Power Agreement Commitment to Invest in Solar Energy. We'll go back to Ms. Martin.
Well, thank you. So the Center Region Council of Government Solar Power Purchase Agreement Working Group reviewed proposals and will make a recommendation to COG and the participating municipalities and school district regarding award of a power purchase agreement. The economics remain viable, and a volume commitment is required by each participant. As electric market prices increase, there is more financial benefit to have solar power. Fifty percent solar participation is considered by the consultant to be the most risk-neutral financially. If net zero or carbon neutrality is a goal, then 75% to 100% for an electric consumption volume commitment is a better position for the Township Board of Supervisors to consider. In addition, participants are asked to decide if they are interested in buying the associated renewable energy credits, and recorded presentations to COG and the State College Area School District have been made available, as noted in the agenda. And this evening with us, we have Pam Adams, the Regional Sustainability Coordinator, who has agreed to spend her evening with us to review a little bit of the SPPA Working Group and assist in the, with the, assist the board through answering of questions to help you get to your decision to invest in solar energy, because she's the expert here. And I'll hand it over to Pam, Ms. Adams, on this note. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I'll make two clarifying points. I am not an expert, but I have been, I have been learning a lot about the process, and the first clarifying point is that this is actually a center county solar group, not the center region COG solar group. We have been busy at the COG with staff support with the school district to try to work and understand this with the project management team. So I'll just clarify those two little points. I am going to do a presentation, and I'm going to go through some of the beginning parts more quickly, because I've presented at the general forum, but I think it's good to have the context in front of you, and if you have questions, you can stop me. But I'm going to spend more time on the how today to help you with your decision-making process of the volume of electricity. And I did present this at Facilities Committee, so Laura will hear this again. So why we're doing this, there's multiple reasons that are listed here for the Working Group that has been working on this since 2019. These guiding principles are really like, we want the economic benefit, as well as the environmental and social benefit. So that's the general overview of the guiding principles that we've been trying to follow. As far as the Working Group, there are 15 entities, and that's why we're center county, because it actually includes school district authorities, the center county government, those listed there on the left. And then the project management team is the smaller group that's been basically meeting on a weekly basis to try to work with the consultant and the information that's coming in, learning how to get that information back out to all of the Working Group members. As far as where we are in the process, we've started with that formation of the group working through. We're now in this fourth phase of negotiating the contract terms before we sign a PPA. And so the items that are starred there are where we are trying to make those final pieces come together. We have two PPAs from developers that we're trying to keep to leverage for negotiation. We do have a retail contract and a solar developer contract that's under legal review right now. The consultant has done his review, and so that, all of this information is sort of coming in process. But what we know is that when we did the RFP, Request for Proposal, we put in there that the group wants to put about 50 to 100% of our electricity into a solar project. So the developers sent us or gave us proposals, and we have six projects that meet our terms, and they range from eight megawatt, which is more like that 50% usage, up to 20 megawatt, which is closer to the 100%, and we've got some in between. But to narrow it down to that final project, we need to narrow our range, as well as we want to make sure... want to make sure there's still enough participation so that we stay in that fifty to a hundred percent. Because if we go below, then that developer will be able to change its pricing. So we kind of need, well, we're not kind of. We're now to the point where we need to make an initial volume determination. It's not a final commitment, but it's that beginning start to narrow it down. So to help you figure out how to think about what commitment you want to put into solar, these are the, you know, key points. Prices that we're seeing, as Centris has said, is that we have competitive prices looking into the future market. That helps provide budget certainty. The PPA is at a fixed price. When we say fixed, it's solar. So solar doesn't operate at night. And in the winter, it has different output than in the summer. So solar also needs traditional electricity to be able to operate. So when there's that mismatch of buying some fossil, the traditional electricity versus solar, that's called settlement cost. And so that will give us some variation of plus or minus five percent. Plus, there is a 1.5 escalator that's in the SPPA. The usage that you're not putting into solar, if you choose to not go a hundred percent solar, that still needs to be managed. And so as a group, we will be managing that traditional grid electricity with either fixed prices or left at the market, and we'll be working with the retail provider. That contract is not for fifteen years. It's on a three- to five-year basis. I'm going to show you some examples of electric bills, so that should help explain a little bit what things look like now and what they're going to look like. And as Centris said, you know, if you're looking for the financial prudent part, if you just want that, maybe you want to consider fifty percent. Whereas if you have carbon goals or preference for more budget certainty, you should be looking at seventy-five to a hundred percent. Here's all of the regional and municipal targets. As you all know, Ferguson has a resolution to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions no later than 2050. So this is something that can help you reduce your greenhouse gas emissions. Okay, so when we go into how do we determine what the rate amount is and what are these rates? Are they going to be good? Are we comfortable with them? It's hard to know the future price, right? There's a risk when you lock anything in for a fixed price for a long term. You can look at the past, and I'm providing this information here because we've gotten it asked, what has the historical rates been? The numbers here are for Pennsylvania commercial on average. Basically, that means if you're a commercial business and you are buying electricity, you're not contracting out with any retail services, you're not looking at anything, this could be your average price. The rates are not as important as the percent of change. And I'll point that out in a little bit more as to why I'm talking about that. But the graph over here is a fifteen-year look back. Since we're looking forward fifteen years, I chose fifteen-year as the historical, you know, chart to show. And you could see that the rates don't change a lot until they start to go down, and then they're... They've been spiking up. But as you can see, the variation really is, you know, five percent is the main part until more recently with this twenty-seven percent. And I'll just point out in the beginning, just in case you're wondering, in 1999 is when our utility, electric utility became deregulated. So that was where there's some major change. So it's basically policy and war that could have some of these impacts that we're seeing on these extremes. But for the most part, we're looking at variation. Five percent would be a good average, and some years it can be variable. The average annual increase is 1.7 percent. And as I pointed out, that we... The PPA will have an escalator of 1.5 percent. So that seems to be in line with like history over time. And I will also just point out, when these variation swings happen, if we had locked in the PPA, let's say at .93. So if you look at these here, it's below, what did I say? .93. Point 094 was the average. So I use .93 because it's pretty, a little bit less. Just by locking in at .093 for this fifteen-year period would have saved the group, if we used their electricity, $750,000. Obviously, it depends on what number you pick, but slightly below average would have saved the money. Just a little tidbit of pointer there. So that's the past. Let's talk about what we think could be in the future. So currently, Ferguson Township's contract has run up and they're currently paying, when I say ran out, I think you used to lock in every two to five years, and as we all know, prices have really spiked. So you're currently in a purchasing time where you have to pay a little bit more. So currently, your usage, you're being charged ninety-three dollars per megawatt. And this is usage for Ferguson Township based in 2018. So you can see that for an annual usage of 588 megawatt hours, you have a charge here for what the utility charges you, plus you have these pass-through costs from the PJM, your retailer who you have a contract with puts a little charge in. I don't know exactly if it's 250, but that is... This information is what we're using as a standard because when you look at what the projected market rates are and what we're going to be talking about, I'm using those same fifteen dollars and 250. So the consultant has projected that in 2025, the market rate is going to be down a little bit, and it has been going down, and that we're trying to keep things conservative. We don't know what the prices are going to be, but this is where it's projected. And so you can see that the same pass-through costs and adders are here, but we're looking at seventy-five dollars per megawatt hour, basically, for in 2025. These distribution costs, as you can see, that's also a charge you have to pay. I'm not going to worry about that because with solar, with every bill, you're going to pay that. So this is what you're currently paying for electricity and what the projections are. So I'm going to be focusing on this projected market rate. So if you see, it's the same thing here. Here's this projected market rate, and up here is the same green. So basically, we're saying for traditional electricity, the 2025 market rate is going to be seventy-five dollars per megawatt hour. If we go a hundred percent solar, or if you go a hundred percent solar, you will now have a solar generation itemized list on your bill, of which your production would be 558 would be allocated to you. And that cost, we're saying, is locked in at fifty. This price is, we're rounding up. We're not ready to release the actual price. We will be hopefully doing that in the next month, once we have that project selected. But we want to keep it a little bit vague at this point, but it's a good price, but it's rounded up. So that would be your PPA cost, the fifty dollars times the 558. So you have to buy and sell electricity, but you're going to be getting then this credit for the solar that you sell. And basically, it's an every-hour cost. The consultant has looked at what the past performance has been. So on an annual basis, you would get a net credit for your solar. Some months, when it's really sunny, you'll have more. And when it is a little bit more cloudy, like January, you will pay less, and you might even have to pay some. So this, you add up these. There's a management fee. The retail services provider is going to be managing this for us on our behalf, and we will pay them. And then we believe we'll probably have a consultant for about eighty hours a year to also make sure that all of the contracts are set up correctly and operating correctly, as well as the solar array itself. So basically, with having solar, you're going to get a discount, is what the projection is, so that your total bill is actually thirty-eight thousand and that that rate is sixty-eight dollars per megawatt hour. So that gives you a savings of 3,833. The group has looked to say, okay, what happens if the market goes higher? Because we don't know what's going to happen with the market. And as I showed you in the past, we... In the past, it changes between five percent positive or negative, sometimes six, sometimes eight. So we looked at ten percent higher and ten percent lower. So basically, this fifty-seven, ten percent higher is sixty-three, ten percent lower is fifty-one. So those numbers reflect the change in the market. The PPA cost is the same. Settlement cost does cost differently. Sorry, it changes. It reflects the change in the market. And basically, if the market prices go higher, we're going to save even more money, right? Because our PPA is set. If the market goes down, we're not going to save as much money, but we're also still going to be saving some money because we have that solar that's offsetting the change in price. So I have a couple more graphs just to keep this concept going. Here is showing the orange is the market price. And I said, you know, we're right now saying it's the seventy... Seventy-five megawatt. And then the blue is what our SPPA is. And so you can see, basically, the blue stays about the same. It changes a little bit because of the settlement cost. But obviously, if markets go fifty percent lower, which is really tanking, that's about four cents there, or forty, we'd be losing money. And then if the market goes higher, we'll be saving money. Basic concept. If you look at it in a graph shape here, this orange line, same market price, fifty percent lower. This is the base price that we're saying is seventy-five, and then market higher. And you can see the SPPA has a break-even point where even where we are today, it could go down, the market price can go down, and we're still saving money. So this is the opportunity for savings, but there is risk. You know, we're not going to deny that. And so basically, if the market goes down fifty percent, so instead of what you're currently paying is ninety-three, or I've been saying seventy-five is the market, this forecast of fifty percent lower will be like forty-six. It would cost Ferguson Township thirty-five thousand dollars. So that would be undesirable, and I understand that. But there is a cost to carbon. You can decide if you want to think of it that way or not. And the federal government uses fifty-one dollars per metric ton. So for your emissions, based on your electricity of 2018, that would be three-hundred-and-sixteen metric tons. And so that cost of carbon is sixteen thousand dollars. So just want to point that out, that there is a cost to the carbon. And the fifty percent lower market is rare, but nobody can predict the future. So if you're uncomfortable with those bigger gaps, by going to sixty percent solar, this market price is still the same. The orange line stays the same. But now the blue SPPA line goes closer to the market because only sixty percent of your electricity is fixed. The other forty percent falls closer with solar. So you can see that this narrows in the range of the risk as well as opportunity. So that's just a one way of looking at it. So you do have options of ranges. It could be zero, sixty percent, a hundred percent, or obviously somewhere in between. And then as far as the next steps, as far as timeframe, we are hoping to get the boards to submit an initial volume determination, not a commitment, just a determination to the school district by the end of the month. The working group at its February meeting on the 22nd should be getting a selection on proposals that will be able to give information out on the actual contracts so that the month of March, we'll come back with pricing and ask for a final volume determination and get feedback on the contract. And then hopefully by April, do the awarding of the SPPA. And that is all I have. I will say, one question that came up today at the meeting was regarding the projects. There's one in Spring Township that's ten megawatts. It's a hundred and twelve acres leased, and there's no clearing on that property. It's agriculture. The second one is in Walker Township, which is designed to be twenty megawatts. That one is three-hundred-and-seventy acres that are leased, and that would require ten acres of clearing. And then the third one is Walker Township, which is twenty megawatts. It's a hundred and sixty-four acres leased, and that would take five acres of clearing as far as forest is what I referred to. Otherwise, they're agriculture. For our projects, we need somewhere between sixty and a hundred-and-sixty acres. And that is all I have.
Thanks so much, Pam. Did you have any comments before I go to... No, okay. Okay, let's start with questions from the board. And we can just go down the row here. Patty, do you want to kick us off?
No, just thank you so much for all the work that's gone into this. I... Yeah, this has been before us so many times, and I'm glad we're finally getting to this point. And no, I really don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Jeremy?
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this time either.
No questions. Ready to discuss.
I should have said comments, too. Given your comments as well. So questions or comments, if you want to kick it off. Our goal in the end is going to be to determine a percentage. So, you know, if you have any initial thoughts on that.
If you want, I'll throw out a percentage. I'm willing to entertain anything. I think when we initially started this, there was some discussion at like eighty or eighty-five, and I'm willing to go anywhere between eighty-five to a hundred.
Okay. Jeremy, anything you want to add?
That's big.
And it's okay, we can come back to you for your opinion, because I'll have some comments before I'm able to give a percentage to. Corey, anything?
Based on the number of presentations that we've had over the last, even just my brief time on the board in different meetings, I'm feeling pretty confident that I would really like us to go for a hundred percent. I feel like the risk is very low, given I... Given, I can't even remember which meeting it was at now. Oh, it was at the school board meeting. The school board had a meeting to talk about their contributions and got a presentation. And there were several speakers in favor. But in particular, there was one speaker who actually studies energy policy and prices and said that that worst-case scenario, while you can never say never, it is almost never going to occur, that fossil fuel prices are not going to go down fifty percent in our lifetimes. And so he was very bullish and was encouraging the school district to go as high a percentage as they felt comfortable with. So that gave me even more confidence to move forward with and try to get us to a hundred percent.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. I'm getting feedback tonight. I'm not sure if it's coming through to you all. Actually, now it stopped. Thank you, whoever did whatever. Thank you. Thanks so much, Pam. And thank you for getting that data between this morning and now. I really appreciate that. So I am taking a little bit of a different approach on how I'm thinking about this. I do agree that this is something that we should move forward with. But I would like a criteria-based approach as opposed to a percentage approach. And I would like us to be considered perhaps the deciding percentage of not selecting the site that involves, was it twenty acres of clearcutting, Pam? Was that the maximum that I heard? Ten? Ten. Okay. Well, that, I guess, is less, but I've witnessed ten acres of clearcutting, and that is a significant effect. And I think that one thing we often fail to calculate when we look at these energy-producing things is what we're taking away when we continue to clear-cut forests to produce our energy. Because forests are an offset on energy production for the many, 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 many people that aren't us, that are not selecting solar. So I am looking at it a little bit differently. And I wouldn't know how to phrase a motion or a condition or a criteria that would enable us to be in that position. But I wanted to put that out to the board, that we could perhaps be more useful by being more ambiguous if staff can manage something like that kind of a proposal. And I see Pam Adams has her hand up. Perhaps she has something to offer. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, so what I can tell you is that there are two projects that are... that are twenty megawatts, which would be the hundred percent if everybody went a hundred percent. One requires ten acres of clearing, and one requires five acres of clearing. So maybe that is, I mean, one of them will require, if everybody goes a hundred percent, then maybe you want to have it be the one that only requires the five acres. You could put that in your motion. But that's the information that I have.
Pam, when is Harris Township going to discuss this?
Uh, next Monday.
Okay. I would, I would really prefer that Ferguson not have to be the first decider, that we allow others to make their final decision and consider this as a criteria that matters. Again, I'm all in. I just think that we could be a little bit more delicate in our handling of this perhaps. Because if Harris Township is almost a zero, what do others then have to do to get us out of that clearcutting danger? Like, I want us to be really trying to prioritize that by how the timing of choices roll out. So if we're saying right now a hundred percent, but what that then does in the end is make us clearcut more, then that's not great. So you hear what I'm saying with my, yeah, okay.
Yep. I can take the feedback back to the group. The ten acres is the maximum on any project. So nothing is going to be more than that. But we have choices. We don't know where everybody's range is. So just providing volume will give us more insight to be able to help with those determinations.
So I guess I would ask my board if they would consider continuing to provide a range instead of a exact number. Because I think we could come back again, Pam. Is that correct? And get then that more, once again, targeting a little closer once we have more information about others' participation and how we can best avoid more clearcutting. If others would entertain a range to try to enable that process, that'd be great. And that's, that's really all I have to say. Thanks.
Thanks.
Time, time check of ten minutes.
Okay.
Ten minutes remaining for this item.
Thank you. Thanks very much for that suggestion of that approach. I just want to check with the manager really quick. So it looked to me from our notes like the township's percentage was going to be due the twenty-eighth of this month. So if we did not determine something this week, we'd be able to bring it back at the following meeting.
I believe that to be true. I'll look to Pam to confirm that the deadline the township has to report to the SPPA working group is February twenty-eighth. If that is.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, if that is correct.
That is correct, and a range is also acceptable. It just has to be as narrow as you're comfortable with.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, did I see your hand up?
I didn't put my hand up, but I, I was.
That's fine. I saw something I was. Did you have?
I do have something to say. And, you know, I'm being rude, just sorry about that. But yeah, I would concur with Laura. Like, yeah, it's great to have solar, but at the same time, we're kind of not really, I don't know how to say it, but be kind of silly to go with solar, but then yet we're destroying habitat and other natural resources in the midst of what we're doing. So definitely in favor of as little clearcutting as we can.
Yeah, agreed.
Actually, no clearcutting would be.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Can I ask, Pam, could you repeat how much carbon we would be not releasing into the atmosphere if we went with a hundred percent solar per year?
Three hundred and sixteen metric tons for Ferguson Township. The total, if you want the whole group, or do you want just yours?
Just ours is fine for right now. But just so, just so that we can put it in comparison, that an acre of forest only stores two-point-five tons of carbon per year. And so, you know, if we're there at ten, that's twenty-five. So there's, you know, there's, there's other benefits to forest. I don't want to deny that at all in terms of the other ones. But as we're doing a carbon accounting, that we, the solar field, just our portion of it, that's not even the whole thing, far outweighs the ability of the forest to store carbon.
Thank you. So I wanted to go back to something. I thought the questions asked at the school board presentation were really helpful, too. So a lot of my questions were answered there. I'd encourage anyone to go back and watch that if they hadn't had a chance to yet. One of the things that came up was a question about if one of the participants went with a hundred percent. And, you know, it's a percentage, but we're talking about the wattage. So if we didn't use all of that, if we became more efficient throughout the next fifteen years, which would be the hope in another way, would we be able to, you know, sell that back, recoup that in any way? And what I heard was no, that that, and so I just wanted to get that clarified from you because that would be my hesitation, I think, of going to the hundred percent level. Would be, we would be paying for that no matter what we used, essentially.
So the answer to that is correct, that we, as a group, are going to be purchasing a certain megawatt from the solar developer. Within our group, we can exchange, sell, or share our portions as we wish. But we're, that, that's, who knows if anybody else is going to be wanting to do that. I will point out that if you go to any electric vehicles more than what you have, they use a lot of electricity. But you're building, it's totally correct to say, if you get more energy-efficient, that is helpful. But if you start using more electric vehicles, they use a lot more electricity than in a building.
Thank you.
So Pam, can I follow up on that? So let's say we get a bunch of electric vehicles, and we now suddenly need more than that base electricity we're paying for. Would we have to go to the market to make up the difference?
Yes, yes, you would. And that's where all the group will then assess if there's a time and place to do another one of such a thing, or if there becomes other options.
So that's interesting to me because by saying, we're saying a hundred percent of what we're using now, right? And so that as a township, we could start using more electricity. And then suddenly, we'd be like, you know, only eighty-five or ninety percent of our electricity would be coming from solar. You know, so the same thing would happen. If we lock in a lower number now, instead of in future years, it might only be that, you know, sixty percent of our electricity is coming from solar because we've decided to invest in an electric fleet of police cruisers.
Just a follow-up question, I guess, on that would be, and we haven't seen the contract yet. So for the solar or for the retail services, we haven't seen either of those yet. So we'll have other questions, I'm sure, about, I guess I'd say reliability, termination clause, you know, whatever is going to be included in there. So I guess this, I don't have a form of question, but you're making me think of addendums to the contract. You know, if, if suddenly, you know, there was an increased need in ten years, because this is a fifteen-year contract. That's part of the difficulty here. It's a fifteen-year contract. So, you know, if in ten years, what? We have, you know, maybe some police vehicles, maybe a public works vehicle or two, you know, would we be able to sign an additional, an addendum to that contract? So I guess that would be a separate question during that contract time. And maybe now, if you have that kind of information.
I don't have that kind of information, but we have spoken about it. And one question would be asking the developer if, again, since we don't know the exact project we're picking yet, so we don't know the answer. But if there is room, additional room, if, if they're building a bigger amount than what we have need for. For example, if we would go with the twenty megawatt, and we only need twelve of it today in five, ten years, is it still available? Is there?
Right.
Yeah. I'm assuming he's going to be looking for buyers. So I don't have the direct answer other than you're not the only one who will be looking at electric vehicles potentially and other options. And so it might just be that we do SPPA working group number two. I don't. But they, we're going to be locked in for this amount that will be guaranteed to us. The developer can't guarantee that he'll have extra room, that they'll have extra room, that they, you know, it will just have to be that we'll have to pursue that in the future. And maybe we'll be more viable to put solar on parking lots. And we'll be doing something different, is what I hope.
Right, exactly, yep. So, and then before I go to Laura, I just want to wrap up one other question I had, and that would be in terms of reliability and the development of the project. So, you know, if we're in on the ground floor, what kind of terms of reliability are being built into the contract? I guess I'd say, you know, with the timeline of development of the project. So, and then what is the, I guess, the process for implementation, the testing? You know, how, how will we be able to ensure that kind of reliability?
So I think when you're talking about reliability, I kind of think there's two things. There's the actual equipment output and reliability there, and that will be in the contract. And that's kind of the easy one. The process is a little bit more complicated because they, we, but it was part of the review process and the evaluation. So we have some ranges. Some are, have been approved by the PJM, which is the regulatory group that figures out where electricity is coming from. And so several have been through that. Not all of them have. I will say that the two in Walker Township have went to review and have been denied by the township supervisors. So we just found that out, and we're trying to understand what that is. So there's, there are no guarantees at this point, but they've given themselves a year for permitting and all of that information. And we have six that are really all pretty good, solid projects. And they're not all in Walker Township, but they, it, this is all new territory. And so we're learning as we go and trying to find the best information and, you know, learning as we go. But reliability, we're doing the best we can, and the consultant is really helpful.
Thank you. And so our group is the, would be the only participants at whatever development. There are no other participants at any of these potential developments. Okay.
As far as I know, I don't know if the developer's got his hands in other pots, but as far as I know, correct. This developer is working on these properties hoping to have buyers. And one developer has four projects, three in Center County, and one other developer has two projects that they've presented to us. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So I want to go to Laura. You've had your hand up for a while. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you so much. Probably should know this because it just happened this morning. What was the percentage the COG picked? I'm like, feel like it was eighty-five percent, but I should.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. Okay. So, you know, that's not a hundred. And they're going to do a ton of electric. Code's already busy plugging stuff in everywhere there. So, you know, I hear about that expansion. Did the school district come in on a number? What was their number?
They put it in megawatts. And I'll say it's between seventy-five and a hundred, but I have to pull up the email. But they, they gave a range.
A range.
Where they're looking.
Okay, okay. So if we really want to get something, you know, a range in there, so are we the first other than the school district? Okay. And the COG? Yeah. Okay.
And I'm sorry, what are the COGS?
My preference is to really not be in that position again. I would like to not be in that position again. I would like to see what others have to say in a collaborative, sharing, open kind of way and not set any kind of, anything in any kind of writing or stone, or even have much further conversation, honestly, before others can have a conversation. But if my board meets really wanted to get a range in there, I would take the lead of the COG and hit the seventy-five because they are a better size comparison to us. They're still bigger than us, but they're not the school district. So like, I'm looking at scaling. I'm looking at, we have our project. I'm looking at, yeah, okay, eventually you do all plug in electric. You know, probably there's going to be another PPA. So I don't think we have to worry about over, wait. I don't think, based on what Pam has said, that we have to worry about not buying enough in the PPA because others would then be in that same boat and more so than us, and leading the way on a new PPA. Right? So I think that a little bit more conservative would be better. So if we have to say it today, I would go a little more conservative. But again, what I really want to do at this point is motion to table it. And then like, us all watch the other municipal meetings, hear their feedback, and then come back and nail it down real quick in the next meeting that we have. That would be my preference. So thank you. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. We don't have a motion on the floor right now, right? So we don't, nothing to table at the moment.
Oh, that's a good point now, Corey.
Yes, specifically did not make a motion in the beginning, but I was thinking, you know, do we need to unofficially table the agenda item? But I guess not. I would say, I know we're, Ms. Martin gave me the signal that we have five minutes left in our discussion time, something like that, or two minutes left. So I, I want to keep us on track. I'd say, you know, one thing I was thinking about, and it would be also helpful to have Dave Modricar present for a discussion because one of my thoughts was about our public works building and how we already have the solar array. And, you know, so we've done a project like that. So I would see potential for doing something in the future like that, too, you know, on the, on the township building or some. So I, I have questions about that kind of possibility. You know, we don't have a plan for that at this point, but that's many CIPs in the future by the time this contract is over. So I'd just like to get a sense of, is that doable likely? Or is not going to happen? So, you know, I'd be comfortable if we had to say a range right now, seventy-five to a hundred. If we agree on that, I say we go ahead and agree on that and give Pam that direction to not bring it back. If others would like to watch the other meetings and see what the other municipalities decide. You know, I, I think we could bring this back for a very quick item at our next meeting. And since we've already had the discussion and briefly talk about it then. So we've heard one thought on that. Other thoughts?
You all probably know this better than I do. What is the value of being first to set an example to say, you know, we are going to do this, and we hope you all join us in our other municipalities? Is there any value in that? You all are more experienced than I in these kinds of conversations. That would be, that would be the only reason I would push now for saying we're going a higher percentage. But otherwise, I'm comfortable with putting the range in.
I think in this instance, too, somebody can probably give a better answer. But in this instance, everybody had already given a generalized percentage. So it's really more of fine-tuning that. So I don't think anything is going to be shocking, you know, one extreme or another. So, you know, it's, it's more of just having the comparison, I think.
And the commitment, that people are committing to it. So, yeah, I'm fine with this seventy-five to a hundred range.
I would define seventy-five to eighty-five-ish. I'm not sure if I, I don't know. I, I'm hesitant to, to say that because I don't want to preclude some other things, too. So I just, you know, I'm, I'm wanting to keep various options open. So Jeremy, thoughts? Because what I'm hearing is maybe we do want to come back to this next time.
I'm thinking we're going to probably want to come back.
And that's fair. I think we've narrowed it down. I think it could be a brief agenda item. Next time, we'll have all had a little bit of time. I've seen this presentation several times, and it's, you know, I do learn something each time, so this is not, you know, one of our easier topics to get through. So I'm, I'm fine bringing it back again. But next time, I would say, you know, when we come back, we'll be really narrowing it down. We've already come to some kind of agreement here. We'll see what the other comparables are. We'll have those ready to look at, and then make a decision. So if that is agreeable to everybody, and if that sounds good to the manager?
Yeah, I would just ask that there's a motion to table the item to the February 21st regular meeting, and included with that agenda narrative, I'll include what the board committed to during the RFP process, which I believe may have been a range, and I'll confirm, but I believe it was 85% to 100%. So I would ask the board to take that into consideration, but I'll have that confirmed in the agenda narrative for the, for the discussion if the board takes a motion to table the item.
Yes, this is Patty. Motion to table the item till our next meeting.
Second by Laura.
Thanks. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, saying no? Okay, so we will bring this back to our next February meeting to give that finalized percentage to Pam. Pam, thank you so much for coming, for your presentations that you've given all over. I think it's just been very helpful, and, you know, you just being present to answer these questions is great. So we really, really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Okay. Anything else on that item? Okay, if not, we will move on to review, and, I'm sorry, should we take a quick break? Should we take a quick five-minute break before we have, we have two possibly lengthier agenda items? Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break right now. Okay, thank you. Okay.
I didn't remember when I saw her.
Let me see, everybody back? See, now it's ready for us again. Okay, if everybody is back, I'll call us back to order, and we will move on to item number five, Review and Authorization for Advertisement of Public Hearing to Approve the Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan update of 2023. Let me, Ms. Martin and Mr. Progar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda is a brief narrative, just giving an introduction to the Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan update. And this evening, we have with us Ms. Tracy Strickland, who has led this as the project manager with HRG. You may recall, the Board of Supervisors executed an agreement with HRG in August, maybe September of 2021, to have the RPOS plan update completed with HRG. And I'll yield to Mr. Progar if he has any comments to add, and I'll just end noting that Ms. Strickland has been very thorough in her, in facilitation of the process to update the RPOS plan, which was previously presented and adopted by the board in 2009. She has engaged with many stakeholders. You will find in the appendix section when you have the final report, she has detailed every step of the way that has led her to the recommendations presented to you this evening. Mr. Progar, if you have any additional comments to add?
Just thanks to Tracy for all the time and effort she put into this, and for the Parks Committee to help us get through some of the, some of the homework items, so, yeah, turn it over to Tracy.
Thank you. Ms. Strickland, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, everyone. I'm going to share my screen here. Give me one second. Can you all see my PowerPoint presentation here? And can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Let me put this into, there we go. It's a pleasure to be here this evening at long last, providing a final summary of everything that we have done for the past many, 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 many months. It's great to be able to share this with you and get your feedback. I do have about 15, 16 slides to share. I will go through pretty quickly, and then I'd be happy to take questions at the end, or even go back to any slides that you, you may like to see again. As Centris explained a moment ago, we have done a detailed investigation into things for this RPOS plan update. So tonight, we'll kind of prevent, or present a high-level overview of everything we've done and our process. I'll give you highlights from our executive summary. I'll talk a bit about the public input process and everything we did. We'll go through some data analysis, and some of the things we pulled from previous reports. Talk just a little bit about population and growth trends as they apply to some findings and some recommendations. We'll discuss briefly the onsite park assessments we did as part of this process, and then pull apart the key findings and recommendations. I won't go into everything, it is a long report, but I'll pull out the, the highlights, if you will, and the, the consistent findings and recommendations we've developed. So along the way, I don't know if I need to move that, if you can see that, the summary for the executive summary highlights, as you know, is that we took a look to identify the status of existing township parks and recreational resources, facilities, and programs used by residents, visitors, and even the workforce in Ferguson Township. And this particular plan update is intended to provide yet another 10-year look ahead to enhance and upgrade existing facilities, and also think about additional parks or new amenities to add to the parks that you have. During the process of our work, as you know, last summer, we had a work session with the Board of Supervisors to establish a plan mission statement, and also review the previous plan's goals and develop updated plan goals for this one. We took some time to analyze community background data, population data, and take a look at recreation needs and issues. We worked heavily with the township to obtain relevant data, and also get copies of previous reports and studies for us to examine and take a look at. We also did perform onsite inventories of the township parks. The one exception to that is Songbird Sanctuary. We did not do that. It was under development or going through an approval process at the time, and we understand it's remaining a Songbird Sanctuary passive recreation kind of space, so there won't be heavy development in that park. We did a series of public input events, which I'll talk about next, and then we began the process to update those plan recommendations, running the gamut from actions to priorities to specific plan implementation strategies, potential costs and timeframes. And then last but not least, we did develop updated master site plans for Fabric Park and Greenbrier Sabre Park. So it's been, it's been a lot of work, a long time coming, so we're happy to share with you where we're at. Our public input process had a number of avenues involved. We actually attended the Winter Market back in December of 2021. We developed and implemented a digital citizen survey that we ran through October of 2022. We held a virtual community meeting session about a year ago, January of 2022. We then also attended the Municipal Mixer at Greenbrier Sabre Park back this past August of 2022, and during all of that, we also held several stakeholder and sports organization interviews. And what you see on screen here are examples of the types of things we take with us that people can interact with. They can pick an activity, they can do all the activities, they can vote with colorful stickers, they can put their own ideas onto paper. If they don't have time to do the full online survey, we take shorter versions of it with us, and then we glean important information about favorite parks, things they would love to see in the future overall, or even hear some conflicting feelings about pickleball in parks because of some of the issues related to its popularity, competition for access to courts, but also the noise. The noise is the big thing. But it's important data to gather in a very comfortable setting that invites folks to interact with us and interact with, with the boards, basically. So here we go. On the left, we were at Winter Market, and this is our typical engagement station, where it's very tactile, so people can walk or wheel up and use voting chips, apply stickers to the idea wall here. They can use the green dots on the maps to show us where their favorite parks or least favorite parks are. We did that, as I said, in December of '21. We repeated the exact same engagement station at the Municipal Mixer in August. The difference between the two is that many of the questions were more about the overall township park system at the Winter Market, where at the Municipal Mixer, we focused on Greenbrier Sabre Park. So many of the same types of questions and activities. What was really interesting was to see such similarities in the responses, that the top items that people would love to see new or additional programming for still ended up being walking and biking trails in both scales, as well as playgrounds. And then it was very interesting to note, and I can't prove if it was a seasonal factor, when we were at Winter Market, one of the big votes was for winter sports and winter sports facilities. When we were at the park in the summertime, it was all about pickleball and tennis. So we thought that was very interesting to see. We did try at the virtual meeting to adapt some of these activities for interactive, like Zoom, like boards, whiteboards. It was okay, so-so, but we still did get some of the same types of input about parks as environmental landscapes, learning opportunities, inclusivity and connectivity in parks, nature-based activities. But we also got votes for tennis, here you go, lights for tennis courts, and a pop-up here again for winter activities and sports. So some consistency across the board. While that was going on, the citizen survey was running in the background. We got a total of 113 responses, and we found that at least 58% of township residents feel that recreation in open space is very impactful to the quality of their lives. We also learned the top three reasons that these respondents visited a park include exercise, using a playground, and just general all-purpose relaxation. So we thought that was also very telling. Tom Two-Deck Park, hands down, is the most frequently visited park. That was consistent across all the input activities and the survey. The facilities to expand in the township that most people voted for were, again, trails, additional trail segments or more sections of paved trail, playground equipment, I have an asterisk next to winter facilities, which I'll explain in a second, and pickleball. So those were the facilities to expand. And then, similar to that, priorities for the next 10 years were very interesting. Again, we see developing more trail, greenway, and bike connections, and to connect destinations, but all. but also maintaining the current parks and facilities that you have. Also conserving open space and rehabilitating your older parks. So this is, I love that you have been talking about data. This is data-driven. We have an asterisk next to the winter facilities because it was too broad a category, and there was no one contender that stood out defining what those winter facilities might be. So we've noted it as a response, something that we've seen in different activities. But we haven't yet defined it, and no one else really defined it. We don't have them on a ski resort or an ice skating rink or, you know, snowshoe trails. So just wanted to point that out. We did 11 stakeholder interviews with a range of individuals across township staff, civic groups, such as the Snetsinger Butterfly Garden Group and Mount Nittany Health, members of CRPR. And we also were able to get in touch with four sports organizations as well, who use township parks for their programs. I won't read off the whole list, but you do, again, start to see some themes of facility requests and/or improvements, ranging everything from very big, like an indoor recreation facility, to something a bit smaller, maybe more manageable, like water bottle filling stations to help athletes recharge after they've been playing. But another big theme that came out, we heard this at the beginning, even working with the board in the summertime, was that it's now okay for the township parks to have their own unique offerings and identities that can act as a draw for people to come and enjoy all the great features and facilities that the township parks have. And also that not only does each park benefit from having active and passive recreation in each park, it might now also be okay if some parks have a little bit more active recreation or a little bit more passive recreation. That's okay, too. Again, to give those kind of unique features to each park. We also learned at last that it was perceived that the best-served ages in the current parks and open space facilities are children and seniors, but the least-served ages are teens and young adults. That's not uncommon. It is not uncommon for most communities to struggle with how to give teens and young adults self-guided activities in their park systems. This is a list of everything that the great people in the township got for us from both original RPOS plans, as well as the 2020 CRPR RPOS plan, capital improvements plans. I have to give a big, big thank you to Centris, James, and even Jenna Vorgo for being so readily available, helping us with work sessions, answering questions, and doing lots and lots of homework for us behind the scenes. So thank you for your help with all of that. But as you can see, we did go across a range of data points, including data by CRPR and the National Recreation and Parks Association recent agency review. Quick analysis on population. The key takeaway here was the median age 2020, 35.6 years. Not bad. However, it is expected that that median age is going to increase. People are going to want to age in place. That's the expectation. They're not going to necessarily move away. And also, the percentage of folks over 65 years old is anticipated to increase because baby boomers are likely to retire in Ferguson Township, move to Ferguson Township and retire there. So that's an important consideration. In general numbers, the population between 2000 and 2020 grew around 26%, but it is expected to slow between now and 2030. So it will continue to grow, but at only about 12% for a total of around 2,500 people. And similarly, the region is anticipated to experience slower growth, too. Boots-on-the-ground assessment involved us visiting all the parks except Songbird Sanctuary and mapping the features and amenities of each park, taking some pictures. And then we developed a chart or inventory matrix for each park outlining the amenity, our perception of the condition of the amenity at the time of the assessment, the age served by the amenity, whether or not there was clear ADA access to it, any other types of observations or recommendations we might make for that park, and then a priority code, which if you go to the finance chapter of the report, matches the code in the funding priority matrix. And I mention that because what this means is if we give it a number two, we put it in a category of an accessibility issue. So I'm happy to report, even though we have a few instances of number one for safety, there were no red flag hazards that we detected in any of your parks or any of the amenities. It might be more related to maybe the condition of some areas of pavement or gravel trails that might have shifted or rutted over the winter, things like that. Nothing alarming. But if you needed to find a way to think about funding priorities and maybe what to tackle first, this is a way to do it. So in a summary, the key findings from public input, we reached over 300 voices across five different input types. And we heard consistently from those activities, the types of things that the community would really like to see. Everything from more paved walking and bicycle paths to upgraded playgrounds, including ADA play equipment, passive recreation and nature-based activities in parks, including using the parks for sustainable landscape practices and education, looking to see an expansion of recreation opportunities for families, teens, and individuals with disabilities. The ever-popular pickleball is still there, but so are outdoor exercise stations. Not everyone can afford an expensive gym membership, for example. And then smaller items like the water bottle filling stations and even some additional bike repair stations along the way. And then two, three figures at the bottom to point out, just under 30% of survey respondents said that they actually don't participate in current CRPR programs due to lack of information about the programs. They felt that they didn't know they were out there. 27.5% said that the recreation programs that are being offered apparently did not interest them. And then 20% of the respondents said the programs cost too much. Now, this is their opinion, and this is just the data that they provided to those questions. But just wanted to point that out when we talk about some key recommendations later. Mostly from the parks assessments, the big things are accessibility inside the parks could be improved. Mostly what that means is you've got wonderful trail systems in the parks, but accessing the amenities or connecting pavilions to restrooms, to playgrounds, to drinking fountains could be improved. Similar concept about ADA and adaptive play equipment. Double-checking the vertical distance of playground safety surface material to the surrounding elevations. There were some gaps there. Taking a look at large unpainted sports fields to see if there's opportunity to program, and of course, addressing some of the older features like older site furnishings, basketball court surfaces, et cetera. The NRPA metrics review is for reference only. What they give you to work with mathematically to identify deficiencies does not necessarily mean it's what's important for the township or required for the township to address. It just simply means that compared to communities of similar population size, this is, this might be a deficiency or an area where you might be interested in expanding. So some things that stood out were football fields, of course, the tennis and pickleball courts. Believe it or not, playgrounds and tot lots came up. And then dog parks and community gardens. This does not mean that you have to build more dog parks or more community gardens, but those were the highlights from that comparison. And while the population is anticipated to grow more slowly through 2030, the township may still need to consider adding additional community park acreage. The good news is because of the level of trails and biking and walking and everything outdoors in Ferguson Township, you actually have a surplus of trail miles compared to peer communities of similar size. Okay, almost done. So key recommendations are not pulled out of thin air. We took all of that data and turned it around to make real-world recommendations that could be applied to your parks in your system, which include adding more paved walking and biking paths. This doesn't necessarily mean you have to go out for miles and miles. Some of the improvements can actually be, again, inside each park, connecting amenities to each other. As your playground equipment ages over time, take a look at opportunities to expand ADA equipment in each park rather than concentrating it in a park somewhere else. Including more passive recreation and nature-based elements like spotting scopes, viewing platforms, birdhouses, educational signage. And then plan for the aging population by adding more park seating, low-impact activities, and accessible restrooms. They could be temporary restrooms, but making sure that you can cross that threshold easily in a walker or wheelchair if needed. Several sports-related items, again, pickleball, ball-return balls, but even, again, addressing multipurpose sports field striping and lining. And then taking advantage of the master plan review process to ask that certain parks possibly be reviewed for off-street parking opportunities or amenities upgrades, and including unique destinations in each park where applicable. For programming, we just wanted to highlight that there is an existing scholarship program at CRPR to assist residents with the fees. So we thought it might be good to raise awareness about those scholarships, to help folks be able to partake more in those programs. And then to continue to collaborate with CRPR to make sure that the programs and services developed do take township residents' needs and input into account. We heard that statistic that the programs might not be interesting then. We're not sure why, but maybe it would be good to dig deeper into it. Expand programs for families, teens, and people with disabilities, and nature-based interpretive programs, especially in township parks. Just taking a quick note that email and social media are considered the top communication methods that residents use to get information. They said they didn't know programs were out there, so maybe that's something to take into account if needed. And then again, highlighting unique features and attractions at different parks. Last but not least, maintenance is an important aspect, of course, in parks. So we strongly encourage collaboration with CRPR and vice versa to develop a clear scope of work that helps identify the roles and responsibilities of the township and CRPR for maintenance moving forward. And we did throw in there specifically the playground safety inspection reports and any action plans for repairs, ideally ahead of budget season, so that that can be anticipated and planned for. Maintenance and sustainability also go hand in hand because park land can be quite extensive. So it's a great opportunity to expand the use of green infrastructure, stormwater management in parks where appropriate, work with the township engineer when that happens. And continue to include lomo and pollinator meadows and other native habitats in the plans, but also, also, also implement and develop an invasive plant species management plan. We did take note of several parks where the outer perimeter of many spaces was rife with invasive plant species. Finance, I'll end on finance with a note about the Parkland Fee-in-Lu Ordinance. We would encourage an evaluation of that against the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code and consider revising it if it doesn't align. What we saw in the current formula indicated that it sounds like it's calculated based on per person, per dwelling unit, when typically it's calculated just per dwelling unit. So all we're recommending at this point is that further exploration of that would be a good idea. And then also consider the addition of fees for non-residential development, commercial, business redevelopment. And those fees can then be determined either by the number of gross square footage of the building area or the number of parking spaces. And then if you really want to have fun, hop into the finance chapter and take a look at the funding priority matrix and check out what we tried to align to help with parks' decisions. You know, when you have an opportunity and you want to do something financially, that could be, again, a way to look at prioritizing safety repairs, accessibility upgrades, sustainability improvements, or even just general suitability for the parks. That's it. I'm done. We do have a few more steps. That was a lot. Thank you for hanging in there. We will, at some point, be back to share with you the master site plans for Fairbrook Park and Greenbrier Sabre Park and to show you how we apply those types of recommendations as designers to both of those parks. And with that, I conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. A great presentation.
Thank you. We have any time left?
Great.
About 12 minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will, let's go ahead and make a motion. Let's start with a motion.
This is Patty. I moved that the Board of Supervisors authorized for public hearing to approve the RPO, no, P, yeah, RPOS plan update.
Second, my Laura.
Great. Comments, questions? Go ahead, Laura.
Oh, thanks. So wow, double wow. What a fantastic job and thank you.
No, I guess I'll just, this is very impressive work. And you should, and you should be proud to present it.
Thank you very much. That means a lot to me. Thank you.
Truly, it's really amazingly well-done. And I actually, I don't know if this is good or bad. I kind of expected it. So yeah, I don't know what to say. It's really well-done. I do have one question and then something I just kind of want to focus on and maybe, I don't know, ask about your thoughts on. So the question is, is there anywhere in here that you mentioned the land of Thomas Ferguson? It is not a park, okay? So this is why you probably did not mention it. We kind of have unearthed this information through the small area planning process, and I didn't know if this detail made it because I didn't see it in the inventory. It doesn't have to be in the inventory. But I wonder if there's anywhere it's mentioned because what we learned is this 80 acres of, 80 acres of land that used to be the Ferguson Township Municipal Water Authority property in Pine Grove Mills also used to be owned by Thomas Ferguson, who were Ferguson Township. That's the one. So I just wonder if we can put that in there anywhere, or if it's too late just to add a sentence if it's not in there, or even just in the inventory, like, and I don't want to be like a pain, but just Lisa, you can kind of weigh in on your thoughts on whether it's possible if we can just add that one thing in there. And I feel so bad because like you did this huge comprehensive thing, and then I bring this like weird little obscure thing. But you know how sometimes those little weird obscure things may be really important to the community? This might be it. So thank you. And then the other item is, I just am noticing on page nine where the goal is build a culture of, excuse me, sustainability within the park and recreation organization to promote green practices, et cetera. I wept at the beauty of these goals, by the way. It was amazing.
You guys helped create them, though, so.
So good. But then go to then page 139, Sustainability Implementation. And we've got culture sustainability with the Park and Recreation Department's daily operations. And there were multiple reasons why I wept when I read that. Because, you know, we have no control over that. However, we want that. But then, as we look at implementation, we do see that it is appropriate to the township. So I wonder if we can acknowledge both of those things and keep it all. Like, I want it all, right?
Overall, yeah.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, what I mean is that the Park and Recreation Department is actually a COGS. The things that, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and again, it's like, in a normal, maybe, world, this might not matter. Here, it kind of like might a lot because it's COGS department. So like, hmm, so we would use maybe different wording. But then, again, what we're saying here about township manager and staff, manager, et cetera, Public Works Department, that's all also, those folks are all intimately are all intimately involved in sustainability of park operations, because like, Dave Mondricker's doing salting or no salting on parking lots, we aren't plowing, anyway. Winter, winter activities, by the way, I was, like, none of this surprised me, but that has been a consistent thing that people are asking for. The barrier there is that we plow, but, but CRPR operates the parks, so every time we ask people what they want, they say that, and it doesn't happen, anyway, I'm kind of getting off on a tangent, but what you've done here is beautiful. Here, though, is sort of what I'm driving at. Operations of those sorts aren't in our purview. So when I read that, I wonder if there's any way that the language can change, but also, we do want the COG slash Park Authority to do that along with us in unison. So, okay, does, I mean, I think, I'm sort of speaking for the royal "we" here, and I can't see anybody's faces to tell if I'm right or wrong, but they'll weigh in on that, I guess. And that's all I have to say, it seemed like a lot, but I want to get back to how amazing this entire document was, because it really just, it was. So, thank you, thank you. It's a wonderful blueprint forward over the next 10 years, thank you.
Thank you very much for that, thank you. And we didn't do it alone, you all contributed heavily to this, so thank you for that, too.
Thanks, I'll look to the manager, I don't know how big of a change that would be to note the Thomas Ferguson Water Authority land in there, if you want to consider that.
Thank you. I'll just note that I can't really speak on how the township today identifies the former 80 acres of Thomas Ferguson Park land. I haven't identified that in any previous research efforts, but we can look into that, and if we can confirm that it's still identified as a Ferguson Township land and we're the property owner, then we can add that. And then the other item, if I understood correctly, was more about wordsmithing for appropriate representation of who is responsible for maintenance and, you know, the organization. So we can wordsmith, not a problem, any significant changes that would be identified as substantial, we would, we would need to edit, bring it back for approval and authorization for a public hearing. But those items are manageable, again, assuming that it was just an oversight and we missed the Tom Ferguson Parkland. Noted, thank you.
Okay, other than comments, questions, Corey?
Sure, I've got a small comment going back to the, the winter activities category that got brought up. There is a small but active Nordic skiing community in the State College area, and they have nowhere to cross-country ski. The nearest facilities for doing that, where the trails are actually maintained, is an hour-and-a-half drive from here. And so nowhere in our region do we have that capacity. Something I'd be interested in potentially seeing, it's really, you know, really just need someone to lay tracks for people to go on. Right now, the cross-country skiing happens wherever there could be large flat places, the golf course, actually, the game lands that are, that start on, and part of our township, that's a very popular place for people to go, but they're, you know, just roughing it out there. And I think that that might be a potential winter sport in that category that folks would be interested in. Just to elucidate on potentially survey, you know, if I were filling out the survey, that would be the winter sport.
That's a great comment, that is popular here, so thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for that, that's a great comment.
Hey, other comments? I'm not seeing any, I'll just echo how impressive the entire plan was. Just thanks for all the attention to detail and all the effort with the outreach, you know, the municipal mixer, you know, just everything really combined to make a great, great plan. Thanks to James as well for his contribution and the manager. And what it offers the board and staff is a roadmap, so there's a lot of recommendations in there, you know, a number of them were short-term, which was identified as one to two years, you know, that'd be ambitious, but it really is, it provides the flexibility to prioritize and, you know, implement as we can, and so just having that there. I appreciated, too, the emphasis on establishing procedures, that was consistent throughout all the different categories, and I think, I think that's something that will help for many years in the future, just getting a lot of these procedures nailed down and solidified. So, I think that was the extent of my comments, did you need anything else?
We just need the board to make a motion, provided in the agenda packet, to give staff authorization to advertise for the public hearing, to formally adopt the RPOS Plan of 2023 update at the next meeting.
Super, I think we have the motion in the second, I believe, yep. So if there's no other comment, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. All right, well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Tracy, great to see you, appreciate you being in attendance tonight.
Thank you very much, it was my pleasure.
Great, okay, so we will move on to item number six, and that is the continued discussion of Pennsylvania Crime and Delinquency Commission Use of Funds for Tethered Drone and Automated License Plate Readers, and that'll be Ms. Martin and Chief Patrick.
Okay, Madam Chair, good evening. Just as a brief overview, at the regular meeting that was held on January 17, the board received a presentation by the Ferguson Township Police Department on the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grant, tentatively awarded for the use of funds to purchase automated license plate readers, as well as a tethered drone. In review, the automated license plate readers would be strategically placed throughout the township, with their primary focus being on traffic volume and identifying serious public safety concerns. These cameras would be interconnected with the Law Enforcement Nationwide Database, which is NCI mounted to a Mark Ferguson Township Patrol Unit. The drone would be tethered to the patrol vehicle and can only fly above the vehicle to a maximum height of 150 feet. It would be powered by the patrol vehicle and would not have the ability to move, with the exception of up or down, it would only be able to go where the patrol vehicle is. The benefits of the tethered drone, no FAA pilot's license is required, and it would have the ability to be deployed rather quickly during emergency situations, such as missing persons, critical incidents, fire scenes, accident reconstruction, et cetera. In a vast majority of these incidents, quick response by law enforcement is paramount, and it can often, at times, determine the outcome of the incident. A missing person walking away from a location, a barricaded individual, provides immediate and pertinent information to the scene. We would be able to load, also locate hotspots for a fire, again, missing persons. The tethered drone would not be weaponized, that was a question that came up previously, and the deployment of the tethered drone must be approved by a patrol supervisor. So we would have accountability with every activation, so there's a lot of accountability related to this. Both the service agreements have been reviewed by the Township Solicitor for Comments, and the Ferguson Township Police Department Policies for the Automated License Plate Reader Cameras, and the unmanned aerial vehicle, which is the drone, have been reviewed by the Township Manager and the Chief of Police. So that's an overview, adding that the drone would not be weaponized, there's accountability as far as approval of the drone would be needed by patrol supervisor, there's accountability every time it is deployed, and regarding the automated license plate readers, the concern with who would have access to that, it would be our police department. Again, these are tools in a toolbox to be deployed to assist in finding a missing person, an abducted individual, so on and so forth, and, you know, if, again, these are favorable assets that can be used.
Thank you. Okay, let's take some comments and questions.
I, I guess I'll start, if no one else wants to kick it off. So, the tethered drone doesn't bother me so much as the license plate readers. And for me, the license plate readers, it's the number of them, like, do we even have 30 traffic signals in Ferguson Township? I don't even know. But, the other thing that, maybe I missed this in last, the last meeting presentation, was I didn't realize we were getting the COG-mounted license plate, like what State College Borough has. So to me, it just seems duplicative, so I'm just really not in favor of the license plate readers. I don't know if there's a way to like say, "Thanks, no thanks," and just stick with the drone, I am supportive of that, but I just, I'm not a big fan of the automated license plate readers, and that's just my personal opinion.
Thank you. Okay, and I see Laura's hand up, so we can go to Laura.
Thank you, and thank you, Chief. I was wondering, so based, pardon me, after our last conversation, I just got to thinking about, you know, if, if I were wanting to, if I were a victim and wanting to make use of this technology, like, I would, I don't know, I feel like the best strategy for us would be to really get regional on this. I think it would be silly for us to care about, like, not silly for us to care, that's totally in the wrong language, it would be less, hmm, if we were going to prioritize the places where we would want to read license plates for crimes, I think it would be at red lights, traffic signals that are not in Ferguson Township, but are regional. So I wonder if we can split the spoils of this grant and really go regionally, because we talked about how we were going to use the drone regionally for fire, and I think that that kind of a, so I know last time I said I don't want the region for it to become a crutch, but I wondered if it could become a jumpstart, with the clear clarity it's a jumpstart. So I wonder if we could be, maybe, get two drones, and one could be for Ferguson Township Police, and one could be actually for the fire department, and they would have control of it, so I don't know if the money would work out that way. And then with the other technology, I, I don't, I'm not totally opposed to the technology in some sort of an abstract kind of a way, I want, I have a strong desire for all of our limited resources to be shared regionally in the way that makes the most sense. And so when I think of these readers, and if I'm just a person not participating in this in the fragmented way that we manage it here locally, I'm going like, why would they not put these at the intersection where you go to the target off of I-99? Why would you not put these at the intersection where you come off of 322 in Volfsburg area, both of them, you know? So, I wonder if we can spread the love around regionally, not just by responding with these assets, but actually distributing them to the region. So that was what I was wondering if we can do. I have no idea if that's even feasible, sometimes I think it's so out of the box, and it's like, it's almost illegal what I'm suggesting or something, I'm not sure, so maybe somebody can weigh in on that, thanks.
Thank you, let's ask Chief Patrick, could we respond?
No, thank you for those comments. In this incident, the PCCD grant is directed towards Ferguson Township, we are the applicants of this grant, so it doesn't prohibit another municipality down the road for applying for these assets. The 28 intersections were determined they were high-volume locations, up to 40,000 vehicles going through them, 10,000, so this is at no cost to Ferguson Township. This is a two-year lease, at no cost to the municipality, where if you allow, we could see if this is productive. Are we picking up Amber Alerts? Are we picking up stolen vehicles? So this is a template that we could see if this is a vision that we want to take further. Again, these are assets, these are extra opportunities to, in fact, if there's a silver alert, have that asset, because quite frankly, it could be a resident locally in Ferguson Township, or it could be regionally, or countywide, or outside the state limits. So, these are just assets that we would have at no cost to see, is this something that, after the lease, going forward? Again, regionally, PennDOT, if they wish, they could go with automated license plate readers, I can't speak for PennDOT or other municipalities, but this was a grant that would allow for an extra asset, it provides safety reasons, and again, at no cost.
Thank you. So, just to clarify, so the license plate readers must be placed within the township?
Within Ferguson Township. We are the recipient of the grant, and we are the only ones that could utilize that, we don't have authority or permission from PCCD to reallocate the funds to purchase in a different township, and that would have a great deal of red tape and requiring approval of that governing body, that, you know, so to be very direct and clear, we would not be able to utilize those funds to reallocate to a different location within this interregion.
So I assume similar with the question about the drone, it could only be purchased for Ferguson Township?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then just to clarify, too, could the license plate readers be used on traffic lights that are on state routes, or only on township roads, so the blinking red light in Pine Grove Mills?
So we actually have, the location would be, and I think Supervisor Steven had mentioned, do we even have 30 traffic signals? And it's my understanding, no, fact, no, but what we have is the, the way the placement would be four on each traffic, or each intersection.
Correct.
So if you think about the, the lights there at an intersection, there would be four cameras to catch any of the vehicular access in any direction. So really, what you're looking at is, I think we have 26 placement, 26 cameras being proposed to the board, 26 cameras to be placed at, let's do the math, four divided by what, so there's, the intersections, I think, are like, there's six intersections. Six intersections, and then X number would be placed on temporary poles, and then two would be portable. So hopefully that gives you the information you're looking for.
Okay.
And I just want to do a time check, we have about 12 minutes remaining on this items.
So only on township roads or on state routes?
No, we could get, we would work with PennDOT to get approval to keep them on state roads also.
Okay, thank you, okay. Laura, did you have another question for?
I just had a follow-up then of my proposal, like, I'm, a lot of times in government for new ideas, it's like, it's hard to kind of understand it at first, and then you learn about it, and you may be a little uncomfortable, then you acclimate, and then you come to acceptance. That is not the pattern that is occurring for me here. I'm learning more about it, I was already somewhat uncomfortable about the process by which it was rolled out initially, I'm becoming more and more uncomfortable, so I'm seeking strategies by which I can meet others halfway. And the only way I'm going to be able to do that is without these things, I feel like. And I tried to hold back that because I value these relationships, but I've realized through this conversation, that's where I'm at. So can we buy other things with this grant and use it only in the confines of Ferguson Township? So like, what I'm asking staff right now for is, is there other wiggle room within these funds that we can accept them within the confines of the grant and then not be utilized for that in particular? utilized for that in particular technology that's actually then got some portable poles that I now understand, et cetera?
And you're talking specifically about the license plate readers?
Two drones, can we get three drones for Ferguson Township? Is there any other thing we could do? Thank you.
I think that's a great question, unfortunately, there, we don't have information to confirm or deny if that is a feasible option. It's certainly something that, you know, after we hear from the board, if the direction is to reach out to the PCCD, which is the Pennsylvania on Crime and?
Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency.
Thank you. And certainly explore that option. Senator Langerholt, representing Ferguson Township, sits on the PCCD, so we certainly could reach out and explore what, if any, options may be provided, and what implications that may have on receiving the grant in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the board in the room.
I also, I mean, one of the things that I recall reading too, was that policy had to be developed, et cetera, and we haven't even done.
The board would not see this policy, it would be unorthodox for the board to review policy generated and approved within the police department for safety, security reasons. You may understand, having that publicly available can cause concern and compromise the authority and jurisdiction of the police department. It's been reviewed by myself and Chief Petrick, and it exists, and certainly, oh, there's our timer, we have ten minutes remaining for this topic. And, and I don't know if the, the solicitor did not review the draft policy, that again, is not part of general practice here. But she's reviewed the agreement for Flock and the leasing agreement between the township and Flock.
Thank you. Any other, okay, keep moving, Jeremy or Corey?
Or it does bring up a good point about it, about the regional aspect of it, like, yeah, it'll help Ferguson Township if it's within our bounds, but, yeah. Not sure if that's the best effect of, for the greater regions.
I'm very supportive of the drone. I think that it made a very strong case for its use, and it's safe and responsible use. I have, that's got my full support. I have deep misgivings about the automated license plate readers. I think, we were trying to make analogies last time between the fact that they are used on toll roads, for example, that's the way that we pay for our tolls now. But I think that a driver makes a decision when getting on a toll road, that they know that that is going to happen and take place, that they're making a decision to travel on a road where they know their license plate is going to be recorded. If we're going to place these in major intersections in our township, we're not giving people a choice. People will have to pass through those intersections, and they will not have the option of choosing, you know, they can try to drive around them, but we're going to put them in all our major intersections, and given the way that the roads work around here, it's probably impossible to avoid them. So, I, I'm, I understand their value, but I think that to have to record all of our license plates, and even knowing that we have a lot of safety procedures in place for that data not to get out, there's the perception of surveillance that is disturbing to me as a way to, in this situation, potentially prevent crime, that I'm uncomfortable with.
Thanks very much, Corey, and everyone for your comments. Anything else? Go ahead, Jeremy.
Don't know if I necessarily want to go off in a tangent here, and not trying to, but one thing I was thinking about, like, there is this concern about surveillance and privacy, and I was just thinking, this past week, like, how many vehicles are going down the road that may even have cameras that are going to various servers and other places, like, even, even for instance, my understanding, even some particular Tesla models now are literally a mobile surveillance device as they're driving down the road. Now, my understanding with like Tesla, like, that footage is not going to like the police department, while we're worrying about one thing, there's, there's a lot, it, it, it's a different world.
So you're saying our expectation of privacy has already been a bit infringed?
Well, and, yeah, but any, anytime we walk into a store, you know, there's, there's record, like, there's even record that we've been here tonight, because, you know, there's security cameras all over the place, so, yeah.
I'm hearing broad support for the drones, and, I mean, I'm really a bit torn on the license plate readers, you know, I've, have, I feel somewhat assured that there are security protocols that, you know, that would be in place with the footage, but again, you know, as Laura pointed out earlier, we're always the first to do things, and it's, you know, it's, it's uncomfortable to, you know, I think Corey said it very well, the perception of surveillance is, is kind of an overarching theme there, and, you know, like I just said, there is a decreased expectation of privacy, of course, but I'm just not so convicted about pursuing this, that I can really argue for it at this point, and I'm not hearing, from at least three, I think I'm hearing only support for drones. I think Jeremy and I were?
I'm honestly torn, just like you.
Yeah. So I'll look to the manager, I'll look to the chief for some direction and guidance as we're not totally at a consensus here.
Yeah, and I appreciate the continued conversation, and in the last meeting, the board actually asked to have this on two future regular meeting agendas. So I just want to suggest that while there is a recommended motion, it's certainly expected the board very well may choose to table this item for a future discussion. I think what I've heard this evening from all supervisors are really great points, and I value everything that's been put on the table. I think, on one hand, of course, there is that increased perception of surveillance, and there are concerns as to how that can be, can be used, you know, wrongfully or inappropriately. It's not, it's not lost on anyone that that, that has happened. And of course, we've shared that we have things in place to avoid that from happening, but I don't want to deny that that is certainly a real concern for not only all of you who have decided to express that, but, but our residents as well. On the other hand, I also do acknowledge that there are, I think Supervisor Thompson raised an excellent point, that we really are seeing increased surveillance actually as a reality. I mean, if you come into the township parking lot, we can see the make, the model, the color of the vehicle that you're driving, and certainly on private property, you know, unknown to, you know, many patrons, there are cameras everywhere. And I'm not suggesting that's right or wrong, I'm certainly not here to try and influence the board's decision in terms of how you already all personally expressed your viewpoints. I think what I'll, I'll kind of throw out for the board's consideration is that if this is tabled, I'm certainly more than willing to reach out to PCCD, myself or Chief Petrick, to see what options may exist that we can, can bring back to the board. And then I'll also ask the board to maybe, you know, as part of the future conversation, consider one traffic signal, or, excuse me, one intersection in the township, whereas, of course, there are thirty being presented to you, right, with requests for approval to install temporary two-year leased automated license plate readers, that perhaps there might be room for consideration on your part to, to allow Ferguson Township Police Department to pursue one traffic signal that would be based on the volume of traffic and, you know, concerns that are held by the police department based on what data they have access to, and understanding that crime does come through Ferguson Township. And perhaps with that proposed one intersection being on the table, while also exploring with PCCD, to see if we can utilize other funds outside of the purchase of the tethered drone, and perhaps possibly with consideration by the board, the installation of one intersection to see if we could buy two drones, or to see if we could explore other avenues. One condition of this grant is that we could not utilize these funds for any budgeted item, because my first, of my, of course, my first, you know, thought is, oh, we could just put this toward, you know, the Axon equipment that we just recently have, you know, signed on with, but that is not an option. So it certainly would still be something new, and I do want to clarify a point I made earlier to Supervisor Stevens. Of course, overarching policy decisions are made by the board, but when I reference what doesn't come to the board is the internal policing policy for the management and operation of how, for example, we do have cameras already installed on the officers, body cameras, and that policy that exists and is managed for the day-to-day operations is not a policy that comes forward to the board. So I just wanted to provide that clarification, because of course, the board has the policy to oversee items, what we're talking about now, which is the change as to how we manage policing when it comes to what Chief Petrick has, has decided. So I just want to share that I appreciate and respect the dialogue this evening, and with the opportunity to table this, we can reach out to PCCD and explore, and then I'd be interested in hearing if the solicitor has any comments in regard specific to what's being discussed with the automated license plate readers, perhaps any understanding, and I don't want to put her on the spot, so maybe this will be part of our next discussion, but maybe other experiences, other municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania may have experienced with automated license plate readers, to better understand maybe what the initial perception was, and maybe any of the, you know, challenges, concerns, or, I don't know, lack of words, wins for the, for the police department with that, with the automated license plate readers. And so with that said, I propose that to be a pathway forward if the board is of interest.
Thanks very much. I'm not seeing any other comments or hands raised, so we could take a motion to table this.
So moved. This is Patty, so moved.
This is Corey.
Good, Laura. Thank you, and we will bring this back again. I really appreciate the discussion and the thoughtful questions, and the willingness to keep working towards something that we can support and agree on, so, okay, I think that wraps that item up. Okay, thanks very much, thanks for coming. Okay, we will move on to the, right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Your motion to?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. And next is discussion on amending Chapter 22, Subdivision Land Development Ordinance to Improve Subdivision and Land Development Plan Procedures, and that will be presented by Jenna Worgo.
Thank you. All right, so on average, it takes approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-eight days for land development plans, and two-hundred-and-twenty-two days for subdivision plans to be approved in Ferguson Township. The MPC authorized municipality to adopt a SALDO, enabling local review and approval of proposed plans for development. The MPC also dictates that the governing body or planning agency must act on applications for plan approval within the time limits fixed in the ordinance, which may not exceed ninety days. So that is the big issue that I want to draw everyone's attention to. It is not the end of the world by any means. We require, as you'll see in the next paragraph of this agenda, time extensions with all resubmissions. So those come in at the request of the applicant. Township staff accept those time extensions to keep that clock going. However, this requirement permits plans to remain active indefinitely, as long as applicants are resubmitting plans and extending that ninety-day period. So it's problematic, because staff, we are managing multiple deadlines that are being monitored based on the new resubmissions. And then the other trouble with this process is that it permits longer view times, and allows applicants to retain vested rights in township ordinances after amendments are made by the board, which is a bigger issue. So, really, the MPC went, little has been amended in the procedures part of this since nineteen sixty-four, and they did their best to capture all land development plans within this procedure, when the reality of it is, there are always instances where time extensions are needed, PRDs, large developments. So I think what has been happening here is time extensions are being treated more as rules, as opposed to exceptions. So this is something that staff has been looking at. I doubt we'll get to ninety days, that's pretty amazing, maybe minor subdivisions, but we would definitely like to get closer to ninety, and that's really what we're looking at, amending Chapter 22 to include clear written procedures and application submission requirements. I can't tell you the amount of land development plans we receive that are incomplete. We don't have stormwater plans, we don't have lighting plans, basic requirements that if codified in our ordinance, we can kick back to the applicant, say, if it's not complete, time clock doesn't start. So that's really what staff is looking for authorization for.
Thanks very much. Okay, we can, we can start with a motion.
I move to authorize staff to draft an amendment to Chapter 22, Subdivision and Land Development.
This is Patty, I'll second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion on this item?
Seems very reasonable, what you're requesting.
My thought exactly, thanks for the clear explanation, that it makes sense. Laura, any comment?
No, this is great. Many blessings.
All right, well, there's no other discussion, move a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. Moving on to discussion and approval for staff to conduct parking study on Nixon Street. I'll look to Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Mr. Rogger, Public Works Director, excuse me, Director of Public Works is now with us this evening, and so I'll, I'll read to you the narrative. Staff received a complaint of a vehicle parking in the northbound lane of South Nixon Road near the intersection of Route 26 and Pine Grove Mills. This section, and I'll also note that I believe a few board members may have also received this complaint from the resident or one of the residents that had submitted complaints regarding this matter. This section of road has curbs and a centered double yellow line, and the police department responded to the complaint, and were hesitant to ticket or tow the vehicle under the motor vehicle code, and it's, it's preference at this point that a parking study be completed to adequately go through the process to ensure that signage is appropriate, signage that would say no parking, and with that signage, it would provide a, it would allow for the Ferguson Township Police Department to issue tickets to any unlawful parked vehicles on Nixon Street. And so the board this evening is being asked to authorize staff to conduct the parking study, and when the results are prepared, we'll bring it back to the board.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to make the motion?
This is Patty. I move that the Board of Supervisors authorize staff to conduct a parking study.
I'll second that.
Thank you, discussion. Yes, Laura?
I just wanted to mention that somebody said to me that there used to be a no parking sign on that utility pole there. Not saying that's a legal sign that was there, but word on the street is that there used to be a no parking sign there, so, but I'm supportive of this. This problematic thing is happening, and this is the hoop that is to be jumped through to make it stop, so I'll, I'm... So I'm supportive.
Any other discussion?
I noticed myself, as well as Mr. Gracie Griffith, has consulted with Google Street View and not seen a sign, but we're curious to see if there was a sign there at one point.
Yeah, there could have been. Maybe that's what prevented it from happening for a while and might not have been an official sign, so.
That's great.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. And next is discussion on process for the Board of Supervisors to approve work plans for authorities, boards, and commissions. Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Provided with the agenda packet is a memo to the board that just provides a very general, brief description of the active authorities, boards, and commissions. And by active, I mean that are regularly meeting either monthly or quarterly. And I wanted to provide that to you so you were all have, you know, being able to participate in this discussion, having access to the basic information that gives the authority for the authorities, boards, and commissions to operate. And with that, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, in 2019, or maybe it was 2020, the Ferguson Township kind of moved into a different direction, really, if I'm being honest, led by Director of Planning and Zoning with this very talented, you know, genius idea to kind of organize how routine items were being brought forth and organized in addition to some of the non-routine items put on the docket of list of things to do for Planning Commission and the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Advisory Committee. Did I say it right? Jenna refers to this as Pine SAP. I like to give the long-winded overview, Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee. And so these work plans had been prepared and vetted and approved by the individual ABCs and then brought forth to the board for approval or acceptance using the consent agenda. And sometimes there would be, as part of that approval or acceptance of a work plan, not an opportunity for discussion to further understand or explore those non-routine items or maybe even opportunity to weigh in on a very general routine item in the understanding of what tasks could be generated through those routine items. And so being brought to you this evening is a discussion for guidance from the board on how exactly the board would like to see this process facilitated. Staff believes this is a great tool and should still be utilized in terms of having a work plan, being able to present it to the authorities, boards, and commission that are meeting regularly, so it helps keep, you know, their work tasks known early in the year and so they can facilitate their work plan in accordance with board's reference. I want to, I just really want to reiterate that this, that all of them, with the exception of the zoning hearing board and the planning commission, are advisory boards or commissions or committees to you as a board. So they should be only putting together work based on your request. So provided in the memo, at the end of the memo, it's pretty clear as to what would be helpful for staff, which is, would you like the process to continue having it be, having the work plans generated from the individual authorities, boards, commission, and committees, and then brought to you for acceptance through consent agenda? Or would you like an alternative option, which could be anywhere from a variation of what we currently do or in reverse, a work plan being prepared by a staff member, brought to the Board of Supervisors for review and approval or a discussion for an amendment, and then having that approved by the board and then being introduced to the individual authorities, boards, and commission? I'll just note that as part of this discussion and guidance that we're looking for, this would begin for next year. Of course, the authorities, boards, and commissions have already developed their work plan for 2023. We'll be bringing that in front of you all for review as an agenda item, not through consent agenda, but for a agenda item to be part of a discussion as prior to approval of the individual work plans. And that is my opening. Any questions?
Thanks very much. Questions, comments?
We're keeping the one that starts.
Sure.
The latter part of what you said sort of appealed to me, the one that is generated by staff that comes to us and then down that way, only because I think it really helps with workload. You know best what the workload is that can be addressed, et cetera.
I agree. I see Laura's hand raised.
Thank you. Well, they're both good options that have been presented. I actually would, I kind of like the idea of the body generating their work plan with staff. Well, first of all, I love the idea of staff driving this to a degree because they've been involved with the conversations with their advisory body, and they probably have just like a memory of the kinds of things that they really wanted to discuss in the previous year and can carry it forward. So I like the idea of staff, you know, participating and shaping that. But then I like the idea of the advisory body driving it to come to us because I guess, like us, they have their own topics that they have found to be places they really want to explore. So however, I would rather add an extra staff than the board because I think in the past, we kind of glossed over our responsibility then to give those bodies feedback. I think it's been kind of like our problem. So I think the change I would maybe propose as a thought, and I'm not married to any one thing in particular, I think it's great we're just talking about it frankly, but what I would maybe consider, staff and the advisory body making the work plan and it coming to the board, and instead of a consent agenda item, it coming as an item on our agenda. So we can actually look at it and give them feedback and modify it if we want to, like do a strike through or an addition, kind of an idea. So that would be maybe a third possibility of a way that we can move forward. But again, I'm just really happy we're talking about it, and I think it's going to be a good communication tool, whatever we decide. Thanks.
Thank you. Cory and Jeremy?
I'll throw in, I think it's a good time to look at this too because, like you were saying, you know, some of these commissions are really new, so, you know, these bodies. So it's a really great time. They've been active for several years, you know, Pine Grove Mills, you know, not too long, but they've had a chance to get in their groove and see what their, I guess their workload looks like and, you know, the, I guess what they routinely have to do and things like that. I think I like the idea of staff generating the work plan because they are in touch with that advisory committee too. So they would know, you know, like the tree commission really wants to, you know, spend time next year looking at whatever, you know, a certain kind of tree. So, you know, they can prioritize those things and help the board and that group see kind of where the resources can be put. So I guess that's where I'm leaning toward, having the staff create it, bring it to the board, and then bring it back to the advisory committee. Because like I said, I think staff will be able, they've been working with the group, so they'll know special things that maybe the board wouldn't be aware of. I think it'll keep things efficient. I think it'll, you know, allow for that, you know, extra interest work to carry on when it's feasible. My thought. Jeremy and Cory, anything?
No, I mean, I think, you know, one of the, I think it's important that it comes to us because there might be, there could be many things that we are thinking about as charges for these groups, you know. If there's something that we need more information on or we just want more feedback on before we move forward with something that's related to one of these areas, that would be the time to ask for it while we're thinking about the year and the year for all these groups up front. So I appreciate, I would want there to be a place for us to check in before, you know, these charges are given to the ABCs, just to see if there isn't anything that we might want to contribute to it. But otherwise, I, you know, we're doing these to the benefit of, I hope, the staff to get the input that they, to get the input that they need to make sure that something is fully vetted before it ends up coming back to us. And so whatever makes that more efficient for you all, I'm all for.
Five minutes.
Thank you. I should have added too, I thought that was a great suggestion to always have them as agenda items. When Laura suggested that, so that the board can see it, talk about it, review it, and really give feedback, so it's not just on a consent agenda, so it can, and it just keeps the board really in touch with those ABCs. So, you know, I don't know if there is a presentation schedule from them. I think there is, I don't know, but, you know, that, I'd like that to be part of the work plan, I guess, then. You know, and having the, I think what I'm hearing from Cory too is to be able to look to the following year, so maybe, you know, having them worked on at the end of the year so that they're ready to go at the start of the new year. So I think that makes sense. And what the manager was saying, we'll see this year's work plans, so we'll get a feeling for going through them and working through them. Any other discussion? So we can craft a motion here. So you're looking for something along the lines of the board authorizing staff to draft work plans for ABCs? Do you need a time of the year or?
I would recommend that we try to get the staff liaison to bring to the board December, the December prior to the new year. That way, then at the beginning of the reorganizational meetings, the staff member would have the approved work plan to share with the advisory committee.
This is Patty, I move that the board.
Yeah, I would say authorize.
Move what Centris says, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it was said between the chair and the manager.
Authorize staff to.
Authorizing staff to present in December a work plan for the ABCs.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I think that captured it.
That was painful.
I'm sorry.
It's hard when it's not written.
Okay, note taken. I can try to provide two, and to be fair, in the past, we have provided two motions where there was like a yea or nay. So my apologies for not doing that.
No, no, it's good, it's good.
It's too late, it's too late for us to come up with our own motion.
That is fair, that is a very fair point.
That's probably the problem.
Okay, all right. So yes, so then we'll plan to bring to the Board of Supervisors, or when I say we, the staff liaison that assists with the ABC, we'll bring to the board a drafted work plan for the board to have discussion and finalize so they may present in the new year at the reorganizational meeting. And then just for a point of clarification, at the next regular meeting, February 21st, you'll see the work plans that have already been drafted. I don't want to change process in the midst of what's already been done. So this process will begin December of 2023 in preparation for the 2024 work plan.
Great, okay.
And I'll just say thanks to Jenna Worgow for bringing that idea to the township in 2019.
Yeah.
And now we're just able to kind of like finesse the process, but it was, it's a great tool to have, to lean on in facilitating the ABCs. Thank you, Jenna.
Absolutely. So I had Patty made the motion.
I'm going to second that right now.
And we are going to second it, okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Jeremy.
Did you already say, okay, I didn't think so. And Jeremy had seconded, okay.
I think he's seconded.
Any other discussion? I see Laura's hand is raised.
Yeah, I can see it in the dark. Sorry, I'm going to change the locations because my battery was dying and my outlet was dead, so that's, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to say, this is great. I did have a little bit of a shudder when I heard December. So like, just staff has already thought that through and everything, I'm sure. And so we're all good with like another thing in December, and that's all cool, but I, does anybody, I blacked out last December, so.
I did have a similar thought, and then I remembered that we moved our budget up. Our budget meetings are in October. So we have some more breathing room there, but I had the same thought about adding something else in December, but, you know, we'll see how it goes this year, so.
Yeah. Well, I'll be forgiving, I'm sure about it, too.
Very good. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no? Okay, all right, thanks very much, and thank you both for bringing that. Okay. Up next is award contract to Gov HR to assist in an executive recruitment for the position of Human Resource Director. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Provided with the agenda is a narrative as well as a attachment provided by Gov HR detailing the options provided to the township for their assistance. The HR director position was a recommendation that came out of the organizational assessment conducted by Gov HR. And while we are looking for Gov HR to provide some assistance, we are not looking for them to do a full recruitment. They will provide assistance virtually, and by that, they are offering to, as part of a partial virtual recruitment assist, they will only be, I should rephrase that, the township will be tapping into their networks to advertise the position and, of course, assist with the creation of a matrix. So when we do interview, we are utilizing a matrix to rate our applicants. And provided with the agenda is a recommended motion for the board.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone like to make the motion?
Yes, I move that the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors award contract with Gov HR USA to conduct a professional outreach recruitment for the position of Human Resource Director.
And second?
This is Patty, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Can you, as I'm just looking at the proposal, there's, there are two options in there. One is a virtual recruitment option and one's professional outreach recruitment option. Just, Centris, are you looking, are you looking for us to recommend one of the two options that are in there?
Oh, no, no, I'm just looking for a motion to approve staff to execute an agreement with Gov HR that will not exceed the $8,000, which is the highest cost estimate option. There's two options provided with Gov HR's proposal. Option one would be just the virtual assist without assistance in developing the matrix for $6,000. And then there is an expanded version for virtual assist where they provide the matrix, and they also expand their number of hours that they provide to assist with review of the applications. And I apologize for any confusion because my computer is frozen, so I'm drawing from memory and also trying to utilize Chief Petrick's computer as well, so. Does that answer your question?
It is, you got the motion that you wanted, I just was wanting to know why there were two options.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no? Okay, thank you. And we'll move now, sorry, to item six, that's the budget amendment, ARP funds correction. And that'll be Ms. Martin and Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So provided with the agenda, I'll make this as brief as possible, but provided with the agenda is a copy of a resolution for the board's consideration that would be brought back to you if you do move forward with the recommended motion, which is to advertise for a public hearing to adopt the resolution that is drafted with the agenda to allow staff to make an amendment to the 2023 operating budget. The reason for this amendment is because, you may recall, the Board of Supervisors adopted the Resolution 2021-21, which was to obligate all ARP funds for payroll costs in accordance with the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Unfortunately, an oversight that I did not catch prior to releasing to you the budget Unfortunately, an oversight that I did not catch prior to releasing to you the budget was the, for the designated account for ARP funds, there was a reporting, as it currently is presented, for just the first disbursement, which was a little over a million dollars. You may recall, for those that were present in 2021, former manager Pavolka held a work session where the board identified specific projects that were to be, were to have ARP funds allocated in support of these projects. Examples are the Northland Mobility Study Projects, Park Hills Drainage Way Improvement Project, audiovisual equipment upgrades, those are what's coming to memory. And if you were to look at the 2022 operating budget, you would be able to find where all of those projects are appropriately presented in the 2022 operating budget, an item that would say ARP funds to assist with this project. Then in 2022, legislation, the, the American Rescue Act Plan updated in the final rule and provided a, really a reduced administrative burden on municipalities that receive less than $10 million of ARP funds. And really what they said is that if, you know, for municipalities that receive less than $10 million, you can use your ARP funds for revenue replacement rather than what was previously in the requirements for receiving ARP funds was a lot of monitoring and compliance and reporting for the individual projects that were going to receive any type of ARP allocation or funds. The latest final rule that came in 2022, you no longer need to have that monitoring and compliance of reporting that was, that was really going to be an administrative heavy lift. So again, Resolution Number 2021-21, the board chose to obligate the ARP funds to revenue replacement. We utilize that for payroll cost. What we're trying to correct in the 2023 operating budget is the reflection of what you'll currently find in the designated ARP funds, rather than it being $1 million for 2022 projected revenue, is to update that to the correction a little over 2 million for the full amount of the township receiving in 2022, that second tranche of disbursement of ARP funds. Provided with the agenda packet, you'll see the very specific documents in the 2023 operating budget that we're, that we've already revised. So you can see specifically what pages in the 2023 operating budget will be updated. And you do that through the resolution. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll also note that we met with Baker Tilly, the township's auditor, just to review staff's approach to correct this issue. And they, they actually said, technically, you don't have to do anything. It would not be an oversight or an issue when we conduct the audit, or when you have an audit done at the state level. And I said, well, what if we want to do it this way? That way, we're being very transparent with this oversight that occurred, and we're correcting it. So any constituents that wanted to follow up, which we did have farmer manager email and inquired about how are these ARP funds being utilized? Because there's inconsistency in your, in your 2022 operating budget and your 2023 operating budget. So we were appreciative of his outreach, and it certainly allowed for us to kind of look in and dig into this a little further. And now in front of you is a request for support to authorize advertising for a public hearing so we can, so the Board of Supervisors can adopt a resolution.
Thank you. Questions? Discussion on this item? And again, the motion is to authorize staff to advertise for the public hearing. So seeing no discussion, would anyone like to make the motion?
I move that we authorize advertising for a public hearing.
This is Patty. I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no? Okay, thank you. And on to award contract 2023 C14 street tree planting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On January 31st, 2023 bids were opened publicly and read aloud for contract 2023-C14. The bid was advertised in the Center Daily Times and was sent to potential bidders. The contract involves planting 38 street trees in various locations. Provided with the agenda is a memorandum from the Public Works Director dated January 31st, 2023, recommending award of the contract. Provided with the agenda is a recommended motion for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone care to make the motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors award contract 2023-C14 street tree planting to Greens Landscaping in the amount of $26,030.
Okay, a second. This is Patty. I'll second. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Great, thank you. And on to communications to the board.
I received phone calls and an email regarding the license plate readers.
Thank you.
I received an email as well about license plate readers.
I received an email about license plate readers and a comment with, just a conversation with another township resident about them.
Ditto on the email about the license plate readers.
Thank you. And I too received an email on the license plate readers. And on to calendar items, there's a number of things listed there. And if there's nothing else?
I will just note, I know we're all excited to wrap up, that we have the open application period that I, for the vacancies, that I believe closes early next week. And we still have, are looking for applications from interested residents to serve on the CNAT board, as well as the CATA board, the Tree Commission, Tax Review Board. Tax Review Board hasn't met in several years. I don't know that they're going to be that busy, but it'd be nice to know that we have those seats filled, as well as a vacancy with the industrial, the IDC, the Industrial Development and Commercial Authority. So I looked at the board to say, if you know anyone interested, please ask them to submit their applications to sit on any one of the vacancies. And I wanted to make it publicly announced in case someone hears this and they feel so moved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else? If not, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I second, we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.